Land acknowledgement. Oh, it's Rachel tonight. Okay, sorry, Rachel. Thank you very much. Next, we would like to adopt tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Favor? Hi. Close. Hey, we have adopted the agenda. As people know, we like to spotlight different departments and tonight we'll be doing a special recognition. I'd like to bring up Chief Operations Officer Janay Gomes.
Can I mention there's two departments tonight, HR and then teaching and learning. And it really is first, we'll start with Janay and she can introduce everyone. I just wanted to say really quickly. We have been through the the system, the kids, the families, the community. Our staff have been through a tremendous amount of stress and impact, obviously from the pandemic. The HR department has. I probably can't even count how many times things have changed in terms of trying to work with staff in our buildings. Who's here? Who was furloughed? Who's coming back? How do you contact people that maybe now aren't willing to come back? How do you make that work in the system? How do we pay people? How do the benefits work? How did Janay was just telling me today that there was change in Cobra, the way that we. So the work that's had to go into human resources in in really communicating and taking care of our staff. Classified teaching staff believes has been unbelievable. And so I thought we absolutely need to bring these folks in to be honored for all the work that they've done. So I'll let Janay share what she wants to share and introduce everybody. And I know we've got some people zooming in too.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you. Thanks for having us this evening. I'm going to ask all of them to introduce themselves, share what they do. And I believe Christina has something she wants to read and then I'll follow up at the end. Nice to see you guys and thank you for honoring our department Tracy Thompson.
I'm Cindy Madsen, Human Resources Manager, and thank you for the acknowledgement.
I'm Carol Ann Wood. I'm the manager for the payroll and the benefits department and we so appreciate your knowledge.
Henry and I'm a payroll technician and we appreciate you honoring our department.
I'm Kristina Nick, Operations Coordinator, and thank you very much for this recognition.
Christina Henry, I'm in Certified Personnel and I'd like to read some thoughts that we'd like for our recognition and. But thank you for recognizing and honoring our departments. Our work is rewarding as we help our employees navigate the complicated and ever-changing world of HR. We navigate them through many new leave options, accommodations, MOUs, all due to the pandemic. It's important for us to protect our employees, pay their benefits and be there just to listen. Let them know we are here to provide support. This eases the burden on all employees so they can support the students. Sometimes we just help staff understand that it's okay to take care of themselves. In order to support safety in the schools, the substitute office trained all the substitutes on COVID procedures before they started substituting. Through Zoom calls and pair deck presentations, because we couldn't meet in person. Our department continues to collaborate with other departments to ensure the parent educators are trained on the state required fundamental course of study hours. Last year at this time, we were staffing Camp Evergreen for the first responders' children. This year, we are staffing Camp Evergreen as a summer learning experience along with our standard summer schools for our students who need the additional learning opportunity. Through this pandemic and in preparation of our move to a new building, we have found improvements in our departments. These include online self-pay for employees, a new online payroll authorization process, which allows us to be paperless. All done in the course of training new members in each of our departments and integrating the human resource and payroll processes for transportation employees into our department. We have been prepping for the big move by scanning and purging. We are excited for our departments to get together rather than be spread out into four different areas. This collaboration will be amazing. We can't think. Mostly, we appreciate how gracious the staff were with us this year as we worked through all these pandemic changes. We are all here to educate students and our departments and its leaders are here to support the employees who make that happen. It felt good that the employees gave us grace while we worked through their unique situations and light up all the changes. Evergreen is a great place to work and we want to thank you so much for honoring our department. Thank you.
Under the Human Resources umbrella is payroll, benefits. Classified side and on the certificated side, our substitute office and then also our paralegal. And so they are representing everybody and we shared the link Lori gave it to us. So hopefully some of the people from the departments have signed in to listen as well. We wish everybody could be here. We know that we can't with the limitations of space. Everybody's so deserving of all of the hard work and so appreciative every day to all of these individuals and alongside them and help everybody. Thank you so much for.
Hold on. I was someone hold on.
Has something to say, just hold on.
I can.
Well, we can't, but.
I don't think that's what you're asking. Yeah, I know.
While we're reading for Julie's mic to come up, I'll use mine.
Go ahead and try.
Go ahead, try it Julie.
Testing. Good.
Go ahead.
All I want to say that. You know, just seeing seeing all of you up here and I know how much work it is. And I think people don't realize that Evergreen and I don't know, last time I checked, like what the third largest employer in Clark County? We waiver. You know, you're shaking your head, yes. So third largest employer in Clark County. And there are a lot of moving parts and I don't think people quite, you know, understand the magnitude of that. Because sometimes we just associate with our neighborhood school or to someone we know that works in the district. And we don't think about how large of a system it truly is. And it's amazing that the work that you do supports all of that because I think people would be shocked at how you how really we have working in our HR payroll and all of those support systems for our employees. Because I think we stand by our word that we've always tried to put, you know, our the in the classrooms, our employees in the classrooms to support students. But it takes everybody to support our employees so they can do their good work. So I just want to say thank you so much and appreciate all of you.
I wanted to add. There's also those jobs behind the scenes that are important. A heads up our negotiations with our different groups. And that can be a challenging time sometimes. And it's a lot of work and developing those relationships and having good working relationships with our organizations is important. Also, times things don't go right with somebody and having to figure out what's happened, what's fair. And making sure, you know, that everything is done legally can be challenging as well. And and been a master at that kind of thing. So I think it's, I really appreciate what all you do because it encompasses so many things and involves so many people. That sometimes I think people don't realize what Julie said. So thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
And then the second group that we're recognizing is the teaching and learning group. And I think Aaron's going to come up and say some words. I know that again. The teaching, learning have folks zooming in as well. You know, we've talked a lot over the last year about how the the district went from a a onsite school instructional system to an online system over the course of about two weeks and then reshaped ourselves over the summer and and obviously so much of it has to do with the work that Aaron led in the teaching and learning group and and Julie as well this past year, but a lot of it started last year. And then we just continued over the summer. And so I think Aaron's got a little presentation that she's going to share.
Don't worry.
Can you hear me? Yeah. And so first of all, thank you so much for the time to honor an incredible team in curriculum instruction. It's a big team. So they are tuning in via Zoom and I think their names are listed. And there are many, many more because curriculum instruction teams across departments as well. So we have some honorable mentions there that are individuals from other departments who have really come together around this time, this ever-changing time of COVID when the guidance seemed to be changing by the minute, starting last spring. So I'll do my best to represent the amazing work of this team. But it's hard, it's hard to bring appropriate visibility to honestly. And just wanted to note that this is a team too who hasn't had many breaks. I mean, COVID hit. This team worked through spring break. This team worked through summer break. This team then, as we pivoted to hybrid, worked through winter break. So this is a hardworking and amazingly tight team in service of kids. So just a couple things to try to bring some visibility to the work that is behind the scenes. Like I mentioned, we are in the presence of kind of some ever-changing guidance starting in the spring. So we had many iterations of virtual learning as that guidance shifted. And along with that, as we were trying to translate teaching and learning into this virtual space, we had to think about it in terms of how does the instructional guidance live? How does all the teaching and learning live in a remote space? What are the expectations? And then how does that live for students? We had to think about operational guidance, assessment, grading, attendance, set, student engagement. That was all this team had fingers in delivering some guidance and instruction and professional development around. We had to create some modified scope and sequences to make sure that the scope of the work was focused on priority learning. We together wrote the force, the first four weeks of school. So we took the instructional guidance, we took the scope and sequences and provided models for teachers. So they could hit the ground running and feel like we were there to support and partner with them. It also was a way to give visit, you know, a window into what those expectations or that guidance looked like in action. So trying to provide the utmost support to the people that matter most are teachers in service of the kids. Support with design and planning, we also created design. It's funny to think of all these things, the family facing supports. So all the websites where we were trying to support families and knowing how to support their kids at home, where to access information. And then we had supports for leaders, all of the guidance for leaders, all the PD for leaders. That was this team providing all of that. So these are just kind of snapshots of what that looks like. On living out in the different websites and I'll send you these links if you want to have hit into them. Everything is kind of there so you can see the real work in action and what that actually looked like. We also have amazing, amazing teachers who who really stepped up to not only help realize all of this changing guidance in this virtual space, but serve as models for one another. So I just wanted to take a minute to talk about this team's work and kind of curating and helping work alongside teachers to model for one another. So we were able to really elevate classroom practice through the lens of their expertise to develop the shared brilliance and capacity across the district. We also had a lot of other things going on. You might remember that we were in the middle of an adoption, a couple of adoptions. We also were in the middle of a shift to six period day. So we're really, really proud of the work that this team was able to do to continue moving forward that work. And part of that was in collaboration with transportation and our TLs and all the brilliant people out in the out in the buildings to get materials in the hands of kids. So there's a huge effort and celebration around that. And then there's a couple of other things that you're welcome to look through, but we got to hear from students. We asked students to tell us about their experiences with grading practice. And we used some of that in our professional development to to get smarter and better and wiser about our grading practices during this time. And then the simultaneous learning is just a great celebration. You'll want to click on that. It's super fun. That's over time, we have brilliant practitioners, brilliant instructional coaches. This is Tiffany out at Mountain View who led us into her space to play around and get super smart about simultaneous learning and film it for purposes of PD as we were making that shift. So that was all the work of this team in conjunction with smart practitioners out in the field. And then there's a lot of things that have emerged. So we've been able to capitalize on new opportunities through this time. I know we've talked about that in different settings with you all too, but we've been able to uncover a lot of things, a lot of work and start the work around equitable practice. We've been able to kind of highlight the necessity for strategies that promote asset-based learning. We've gotten smarter, tons smarter about digital learning, and this is not something that's likely to go away. This is something that's going to be incorporated into our and students' daily experience. So there's a lot of things we've been able to notice and name and capitalize on through this time. And again, that's all the work of this team. So it's with great humility that I try to represent them to you and I'm just so thankful to you for acknowledging their great work.
Okay, yeah, I'll send that to you.
So I totally agree with you when you talk about the the things that emerge because I think we talked about it a lot. That, you know, it's not, wasn't an ideal situation for anyone, right? But I think we've learned a lot and we can carry forward a lot of the things that, you know, came out of this. Where, you know, we've learned that some of our students learn better online. And so I think that there's a lot of things that we that we can do better. And obviously that, you know, we were in such a good position because we already have enough devices and things. And so when we got those out to kids and then we put tools in place to really help them. So I think that only gets makes us stronger in the future, moving forward. We were so excited about the reading curriculum and that was, you know, just rolled out, what, two years ago? And so we knew that there was going to be second and third year of it. And so I think I'm super excited to kind of see where that's at moving forward too. So, but thank you for your work that you're doing because I I know that it's all coming together and it's making everybody's lives a little bit easier too in the classrooms.
There it goes. I I wanted to echo that with great appreciation for the unified way that you brought. You invented a learning modality right on the fly and then refined it and then refined it another time. It's been a very difficult year. I've read, I wanted to say this when you know, is that, but I, you know, I read the contracts. I read the LNI guidance. All hundred, it seemed like there were a bazillion pages of all this guidance and all these changes and things to watch out for and things not to watch out for and recognize that you were buried in such detail and brought a real excellence to helping people understand what was going on, even though I know so many didn't like it. But like Julie said, I don't see the, I don't see the online components going away. I don't see the remote learning opportunities going away because of all those kids who did better. And it's good to hear a recognition of that and a path forward for them too. Hard year. Appreciate all the work that everyone's been doing.
Ally and. Very much. If we have the board consent agenda, do I have a motion for?
I move that we have.
All in favor? Next up, we have the superintendent consent agenda. I have a motion for approval of this superintendent consent agenda.
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay, next we have matters, oops, sorry, my phone was.
Okay.
That's what we have. I'll be happy about it. We'll entertain a superintendent's report from Superintendent Orlando.
Just, I've got to help, you know, I'll entertain. I've got a few things. I wanted to start it off with last week, I think Thursday. Gail and her crew, we did the another sit down with the superintendent, which I hope was able to give us the opportunity to give me the opportunity to get a little more in depth with some of the questions that certainly we've heard from the community. I think when we had superintendent report a couple of weeks ago, shared a lot about some of the the reasoning behind the decision that the district had made with respect to returning to school this spring and what work went into that as well as the fall. So we tried to elaborate and incorporate some of the questions that have come up from the community. I know we've had somewhere around 2,700 views of that. I'm, I'm not. Start the video? No, I'm sorry. I thought I heard something. So I do feel like we're getting more viewing on that. Again, we've said it a number of times, the guidelines have changed. And as they've changed so many times throughout the year, I would expect them to change a few more times, but we plan on a full opening in the fall. One of the things that we've had questions and we get emails and even phone calls from people interested in making sure that there is still a remote learning option as we move forward. We're still waiting to hear from OSPI what the guidance is around that in terms of what are the requirements to count a student as a basic education student versus an ALE student, alternative learning experience student. If we do get information on that, well, we will. But if we get information that appears that it's it's doable, that we will move that forward, we certainly will survey our families again to see how many, how many of our students and how many of our families want to remain in some sort of a remote option. And I think it's just a more, it's another illustration of honestly, the way everyone has has, I think, made every effort to try to react to the guidance and make as many opportunities available for our students as we possibly can. Hopefully we'll hear about that soon. It's May 25. Last day of school is coming up relatively soon, so we're hopeful that we'll get some good guidance on that soon. Second thing I want to mention is graduation and we have graduation coming up, I think, three weeks or there about two weeks now, two weeks from Thursday, Friday and Saturday. First thing I would like to say about that is while everything is controversial, we will have a graduation. That's fantastic considering last year we, you know, it was just a struggle to to understand exactly what was going to happen. So we have so many students last year that weren't able to participate in a graduation other than in August, we were able to do the drive-through and we did some drive-throughs at the building. But we'll be able to participate in a graduation this year that looks more like what we're used to. It won't look exactly like what we're used to because we still will have state guidelines that we have to follow. And again, as Rob mentioned to me earlier, the guidance that comes up isn't made up guidance in Evergreen School District. This is guidance that comes to us from the Washington State Department of Health. It comes to us from the governor's office. So when you've seen phase one, phase two, phase three, you know, and we've had stage one, we've had all kinds of different plans over this year. The school board in Evergreen doesn't dictate what those plans are. We we follow the guidance that we receive from OSPI, the Department of Health and the state of Washington. So we'll continue to do that. One of the things that we are seeing recently is different changes in guidance on mask usage and on particularly not just for schools, but for outside sporting events. We're starting to see more talk around people that are vaccinated versus non-vaccinated. So we received guidance from the governor, Department of Health, that vaccinated sections was an opportunity for us to provide at our graduations and. was an opportunity for us to provide at our graduations. And we had some internal conversation, and the board supported the move to go ahead and do that. And the difference really, and the driving force in the decision was, with the social distancing required at McKenzie Stadium to have a graduation without vaccinated sections, we were going to distribute two tickets for every family. We've been able to distribute four tickets to every family with the vaccinated sections. This completely 100% is an, is an interest of trying to make sure as many family members, as many student supporters, as we can possibly get into McKenzie Stadium to celebrate the 13 years that all of these students have achieved, and the graduation that they're achieving. Again, it's not going to look like two years ago graduation, but we're trying to make sure we have as many people in the stadium to make that happen for our students. And I think we're one of, I think I saw in the paper this morning, two districts that are doing that. I think Evergreen and Ridgefield are doing that. There isn't any question that there are a lot of more logistical issues that need to be worked through when you're working through this. Shane will be here a little later. Shane, working with the high school bill, the principals and associate principals, the graduation coordinators of each of those schools are taking this all on, and making this happen. And I view it as a real positive thing for our community, that we have an opportunity to get more, more spectators in there to celebrate our graduates, and wanted to just say a couple of words about that. We, we'll talk in the workshop, we're not going to talk, talk about it now, but in the workshop, we'll talk a little bit about some updated mask guidance that came from WASDA. It's not WASDA delivering the change, it's WASDA delivering the message from the Governor with respect to mask guidance at board meetings. The mask guidance that came out, that basically started talking about folks that are vaccinated and not needing to wear masks, schools are exempt from that guidance, but it's school buildings, it's not non-school sites that are in a school district. So it really, the boardrooms and administrative buildings and buildings that are not school sites have a different set of guidelines. So we'll talk a little bit about, about some of that in the workshop, or whether we want to make any adjustments as we move forward in our meetings. And the last thing I want to mention is, in the back of the room, I want to call out Mr. Jay Buno, who has worked in this district for over 20 years, and he's been a school psychologist, he's been a special ed coordinator at a high school, he's been a program coordinator, he's been a, I'm sure he's been an assistant director of special ed, he's been a director of special ed, he's been an executive director of special ed, he's been responsible for ELL, for federal programs, for a lot of the work that went in this year around health services. Obviously, we've had a few health issues within the last three years or thereabouts, whether it's measles, or whether it's COVID. And Jay's kind of been at the middle of that. Jay recently accepted a position with Portland Public Schools, and I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to recognize Jay for the work that he's done in this district for over 20 years, and just say that I appreciate everything you've done, Jay, and I've enjoyed working with you, and I'm going to miss you. That's all I have for the superintendent's report. So I think it's perfect, I think, to just move into any comments that anyone else may have about that.
We will all miss Jay. The work you've done in such a technical arena that involves all the legal knowledge that you need to have, but then coupled that with the empathy and work with parents, and it's a very interesting area to be working in. But you've always been right on the forefront of everything. So appreciate all of that.
Everything you've done for the district, but also just the friendship that's been thrown into over the Always be questions to ask.
Jay, I just want to say thank you that you always took your time, willing to meet with any of us whenever we had questions, and really explain things in a way that we could understand it, so we could understand better the, you know, role that you have with all of our students, and so we can continue to progress forward and make things better for all of our kids.
There it is. Thank you, Jay, and like the others have said, the open door and the compassion that came with the way that you explained things. And we've had to make some difficult decisions for students, and not been able to accommodate them because of special education law and the way it's constructed, and the way you've explained that to us, made it clear. And, you know, talk about your Byzantine sets of rules and regulations, the COVID stuff seems like nothing compared to special education law sometimes. And so I know you had a lot to manage, even before all the stuff that was layered on in the last year. It's Portland's game. I appreciate all you've done, and wish you the best, and hope you won't be a stranger, please.
I can't say it any better than anyone else has, but we will miss you, and it's definitely a huge loss for our district. Lucky Portland. But yeah, thank you for everything you've done for us for all the years before I ever got on the board, but also for the last couple that I've gotten to enjoy all your insight and knowledge and help in navigating through everything. So we'll miss you. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Next, we have matters reserved for board action. And tonight, the subject is academic and student well-being recovery plan. Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Julie Tomalty, will present the plan to the board. Julie and Carissa, okay, great.
Thank you for having us tonight. And we are proud to present our academic student well-being recovery plan. So this is a plan that is required by the state, and assessing our needs and moves and plans moving forward, knowing that we have a lot that we need to do, and what are we going to do to get there? So while we were creating this plan, one of the things that we were using was our equity lens, which is our equity analysis tool. Again, something that the state, which I really appreciate, has required is to put in an equity lens when we're talking about our recovery plan. We know that many of the students that have been adversely impacted were, for this from educational justice, are specific to many of our student groups that we'll get into. So just so that you understand what parts the state required, so the state required that we had the equity analysis, that we post an attestation that we had posted the plan to the website. So tomorrow morning, the plan will be posted to our website in Spanish, English, and Russian. And that's the plan that you have in front of you. So I took that plan and made a PowerPoint for visuals, but it's the plan in front of you, with some edits of acronyms that needed to be expanded on. We'll talk about the universal supports we provide to all students, diagnostic assessments that we're planning to use and are implementing next year, expanding some of the ones we already have, our engagement that we've done with students and families, and then continue to do strategic supports, and then a monitoring progress plan and strategies. So attestation, and then this plan by the state is going to be visited. So right now, it's the plan for summer and for fall. So what are we doing based on the data that we know to get going for what summer plans we have, which you guys have heard about many of the summer school pieces, and we'll talk a little bit more about those tonight. And then what are we doing in the fall? How are we doing our diagnostic assessments? What are we learning from that? And then we'll be updating and reviewing the plan in November, and then again in April. So the areas that we were looking at when we were doing the plan, and that the big categories were, one was just student well-being, which is what are we thinking about the lens of kids within our plan? Student and family voice, how are we ensuring that we have student and family voice in the plan? And there's many areas that we did that in. This spring, we had our needs assessment that we went out to students, it went out to families, it went out to staff. Throughout the pandemic, we did multiple surveys throughout, and just engage in our communities, whether it was our affinity groups and forums at the building level. You heard from Erin Lucic tonight about CNI, all the work they've been doing. The professional learning plan right now is moving forward with the work that they've done, but then looking at what did we learn from the pandemic? And really, how do we move our courageous conversations work forward? What does year two look like? What does it look like for culturally responsive teaching in the brain? And then what does our work specifically with content like FPC look like moving forward? So the recovery and acceleration, so we've talked a lot about this, about unfinished learning, and what does that mean? And we've learned from staff and students and those needs assessments, like what are they looking for? And parents and students all have a vision for what they want, and thinking that math and English are big areas that we need to look at. So where and how do we set professional development for our teachers around how do we recover the information, but then we accelerate? So this plan is really like a two-year plan for 2022, 23, and/or it will continue to be a two-year plan, because we know we are not going to get there in one year. COVID took a big hit. And our diagnostic assessments, we'll be going through those, but really, how are we knowing what we know? So summer school specifically, we made sure that we are tracking the students in Skyward, so we can pull data through the fall of who showed up to summer school, and then what impact did we have? So we're trying to look at some of our systems a little bit more carefully, so that, or put them in so that we can look at the data and really analyze how it's going. And then community partnerships is an area we want to continue to grow, and how do we build our community to create sustainable partnerships within the schools, and look at some of these specific groups, and bringing in new partnerships? So first, just what does every student get? I think one of the wins of COVID was looking at grading. So a lot of schools really dug into grading and equitable grading practices, and that is something that through different book studies, looking at student data, student grades, who is being affected by our grading systems, that we need to continue looking at. Our K4 literacy model and early learning is something that every student will get, and moving forward into Phase Two of FPC, will again, get the students back into that guaranteed curriculum at those ages and hit with it. Multi-tiered systems of support, when we're talking about what is core, what's intervention, what are ELL services, what are special ed services, and how do we create a system that intertwines all of that? So looking at our different departments and coming up with that plan. And then transition support, so the pre-K to K are fifth to sixth transitions, and then middle school to high school, and high school and beyond. So those are ones that we, those plans have been there of how we transition students. We're looking more specifically about maybe affected student groups that we need to target. Summer school, just detailed a little bit more, this was offered to all students, and we're targeting groups in summer school. So summer school specifically, from elementary, is students that are targeted for reading. So reading intervention first, and then who needs the extra intervention with math and social, emotional, and physical. And then middle school is the academic piece. I'm excited about middle school with the, we're doing one campus now through Covington, and they're going to have the main campus, or the main summer school is two weeks, but then we're adding on this Gear Up summer school, which has a STEAM focus, and that is specifically partnership with the East Side schools, Covington, Cascade, and Y East. And so they have an extra opportunity to go on an additional week and two extra Fridays. And then high school, one thing with grading, again, going back to grading, last year, we had the opportunity to do a no-harm incomplete grade for students. And the issue is, students need to make up the credit at some point to graduate. So our summer school this year, which is offered to all students for free, is for students with the first two weeks, is for students with incomplete or no-credit grades, which basically mean the same on a transcript. They don't affect a student's GPA, but they don't have credit for the class. And normally, summer school is online, it costs money. So both of the summer programs this year are free. So the two-week in-person, which will be taught by instructors with content that we've created through our Apex curriculum. So instructors will have that to work with the students, but then they get someone working with them and beside them to earn that credit back. And then students also have the opportunity for the online summer school. And we are, right now, buildings are going through their lists of students, and there's a good number of them that reach these grades. I think from last spring, there was about 800 students that had incompletes. And so that's, some students have multiple incompletes. And in a six-period day, there's no room to make up credit. So counselors are making personal phone calls, they're calling kids, they're finding the ones in class to get them to sign up for these opportunities. We're really excited that they're free for all students this summer, and so providing those supports. And then the transition program of August for eighth graders coming to ninth grade of a jumpstart, specifically targeted at students that are in eighth grade math, going into algebra, and it would be in algebra, it is algebra and English. Get ready for high school. And the other thing that we heard clearly through emails, teachers, parents, students, is the need for social-emotional support for every student. So in all of the building plans, and with our professional development for our administrators, social-emotional is definitely a big piece of that plan, and how to provide the supports to teachers to be able to reintroduce students to the buildings, knowing that about 25% of our elementaries stayed remote, 40% of our middle schools, and about 50% of our high schools. So there's going to be a large transition, one with just coming back to school, fatigue of everyday school, and then building relationships back in person. Carissa.
All right, a way for us to assess who it was that we were going to make sure we provided these targeted supports for. So Julie just talked about the universal supports, now we're going to talk about some of the targeted ones. What you'll see on the screen here are the assessments that we used to do that, and the data that we used to do that. So our WAQIS is our kindergarten test that students do when they join us in kindergarten, before they start their kindergarten year. I Ready, which students participate in multiple times a year, we'll be continuing that going through next year. Our WEETA test, so that's our English Language Learner test that is provided to students once a year. Our dual-language test for our students who are in the dual-language program. Running records is something that happens at the teacher level that they do with students on an ongoing basis. And then we have our Smarter Balance Assessment for both ELA and Math. Those were the academic diagnostics, and the ones we have here on the screen are those that deal with well-being of our students. So the first one we will be using as a diagnosis is Youth Truth Survey. It's a, it's a new one. We have been using Panorama, we'll be using Youth Truth, and that goes out to students, parents, as well as staff. We had a needs assessment survey We had a needs assessment survey that Julie referred to earlier that students, parents and staff were involved in. And we also utilize the support of education Northwest in their. Facilitating of some focus groups with our current the E I groups that are already convened to talk with them about things that they see that we need as well. And then our Swiss, which is a, is a reporting and data gathering tool. For referrals that we use in schools and that that connects to our PBIS. Which is our positive behavior intervention system to help, to help provide students with. Teachable moments when there are behaviors that disrupt the educational setting. We also utilize our student and family voice in this. And so I alluded to it earlier. The advisory groups provided their input and feedback as well as the surveys that went out to parents and students. And that reached over, we got over 10,000 responses to the survey to help inform the supports that were going to be putting into place. So who are the targeted groups of students that we're going to be supporting? What you'll see here are the students that we will be providing the additional supports to or the targeted supports to. This data came from all of the sources that I just mentioned to you, as well as the audit. That we had presentation on in December that told us about our data over the past few years as well as the, the previous one. Now, what you'll see on the next few slides is the student groups. The strategies that we're going to be implementing to support those students groups and then the grade level at which they will occur. And so you see here on that first column, there's where the strategy slides. So for summer school. Yes, that's going to be provided to all of our students. But we also have targeted programs for our ELLs and students who come from. Areas of low income and that's going to be the grades nine twelve for the low income and K twelve for our ELLs. We will also be providing opportunities for building relationships. And the ready for rigor framework is what Julie was referring to earlier as far as the culturally responsive teaching that we're going to be providing professional development. For our staff moving forward. It is a compliment to the courageous conversation work that we're doing as that was the why. And the cultural responsive teaching is the what and we'll be digging into the how as well through multiple sources. Early learning, that's where we target supports for our K four literacy and that's the F and P, the Fontana and Penel. That Julie was referring to. And if you see the, the, the different student groups that those are targeted, when you have that longer list that basically encompasses all of our targeted groups. And then the, the grade level is listed further on to the right. Additional strategies, again, the equitable grading practices that we talked about earlier. That's going to be implemented for all of the targeted groups, K twelve extended day. Extended day partnerships, the state gear up that she referred to, as well as partnerships with LULAC and teach one to lead one. That will be focused for our Latinx and low income students. I quality tutoring is something that we have been providing for our American Indian and Native Alaskan students and we will continue doing that. And then inclusionary practices, again, via culturally responsive teaching in the brain and our new work with neighborhood schools. Here we have the strategies of multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS that will be provided for all of the targeted groups as well as the professional learning. For the academic outcomes and then social emotional learning for our mental health outcomes. And finally, we have the strategic staffing that we'll be putting into place. So we've added four equity advancement specialists to our staffing, or we're getting ready to do that. To help with our equity work moving forward. We also have a Pacific Islander specialist as a part of our ELL program who provides specific supports to students and families. In the Pacific Islander community. Our student voice and perception again is demonstrated through the youth truth survey that we mentioned. And then our transition supports for those students transitioning from elementary to middle, middle to high and then high and beyond. Once we implement set strategies for those student groups, we want to make sure that we're monitoring the progress of those strategies. And so the district leadership team will be engaging in an analysis and evaluation of the diagnostic tools three times a year. So that we can review and identify barriers to progress across student groups. For academics as well as well being and those will occur in mid October, December, and then again in March. One of the things we were asked to do as a part of the plan here is to identify areas in which we feel as though we are excelling in. Or at least could potentially mentor another district on as far as our implementation. And two areas in which we could use the mentorship or partnership with another district to learn more from them on. And the two that we feel like we could mentor on are the transition supports that we mentioned for students going from fifth to sixth. Eighth to ninth and I can be on. Early learning for our K for literacy. And then where we would appreciate collaboration and mentorship to get better in is our multi-tier assistance of support. And because it's a new learning for us and we're just embarking upon it that equitable grading practices. Okay, and that is the conclusion of the plan here. And if you have any questions.
So a lot, a lot of this is about assessment and. Because we need, we're going to really figure out where our kids aren't a lot of it. It sounds like a lot of the assessments went into planning. And just like, you know, kind of figuring out which kids need to get to the summer program to get them a head start for next year. But I worry about that when we get full time next year, we're going to have so many kids. As that we may do the assessments that are going to be falling behind. And I just, I just want to make sure, and maybe this is more of a budget question when we get to that a little bit. But. These transition supports, are they meant to like help? Because the teachers are going to be doing all these assessments. Who's going to help the teaching staff making sure that if we do the assessment, we know that kids are behind. What staff supports are we going to have in place to make sure that we're going to help those students right then instead of, you know. Monitoring the progress to the next assessment.
So I ready we're giving at the very beginning of the year next year, so in September. And then we have multiple supports throughout the building. So the instructional coach, the language specialist and interventionist that we would deploy. If a building needed additional help and supports from us as well, like. If there's a common theme of something, then we will be doing some information and finding out information from them and then providing supports to those buildings. So what else would teachers need to help within the classroom? Do they need some push in support to the building? We want to try to push into classrooms as much as possible versus pulling kids out. So they're not missing other things. So part of that is getting our hands on kids those first couple of weeks of school. Getting that, that assessment right away. And that's where in that mid October, we could see. And if there was budget things of needing additional, whatever that might be, we would have to come back to you, Mike, and propose that.
There we are. I'll try and be brief, but I got my head in the details with this one. Because it's some of the state level work. I think, are they making you use that word template or is this sufficient for OSPI the way you've got it formatted?
They have a fillable document that I fill out. So once this was our state document. And then there's, I mean, for our website, and then there's a fillable document that I get onto their website and fill out the fillable document.
Okay, and you can just copy paste into all the right places. So that's not.
Yeah, it's a click in thing and it's not pretty. So it's not anything you would want to look at because it's checkboxes.
No, they had us in a was to call looking at this in some detail at one point. It always seemed to me that, and you can verify this or not, the student engagement teams were using multi-tiered systems of supports to identify students. Throughout the year. I guess how widespread was MTSS before the pandemic as compared to the plans for now?
I think every school has a system of support for students. I think the growth area is that we have a district system that is put in place. So to make sure that we are providing all the same supports and that's where that was that area of growth that we want to put out. This is our system. Schools have different people to pull from, different supports at the building. So that's why they've had more of that just building based system. And that's certainly what the set teams have been using. That's what schools before were using when they're doing the PBIS of what are they pulling in? What's the kid need and how do we provide that to them?
I think it's in one form of MTSS or another in all the years that have come through schools and.
Yes.
And been told about those things. On diagnostic assessments, the running records item, is that a, is that a formalized approach to data gathering? Is it something that you can use at the district level to get a system wide picture of student progress?
Yes, yes, and it takes some professional development to make sure that it was implemented appropriately, right? And, and because it's normally something that is utilized in the elementary world, but it's still very, very. Effective when used outside of that. So what it looks like is, is. Listening to students read. Having them engage with the text and then going through and looking at the areas in which they would need support and they do that on a frequent basis. And then towards the end of that, looking at, okay, now how can I assess and provide support, very specific support to this student to get them to. Increase vocabulary, increase fluency. So yes, it could be something that we use for sure.
What about the record keeping requirements and going on teachers to enter the data? I always think of rumors listing moments like this and how much work there is to do. Did we do smarter balance this year? I thought that that was going to be postponed to the fall.
It was postponed. So it will be in the fall for the last, for whatever grade the kids are in this year. That's what they'll be taking in the fall. And then they'll be doing it again in the spring. And then I ready is something we haven't pushed in high school, but we need a diagnostic tool. So we'll be adding that in, in high school for next year as well. So come the fall, there's going to be a lot of assessments to start with I ready and smarter balance.
Thank you for unpacking culturally responsive teaching in the brain. Appreciate the adjustments and the expansion. Appreciate the inclusion of teach one of legal. That is it. Looking forward to seeing the data from youth truth.
For all the hard work in that you guys. As a parent of a child going that transitioning into. I definitely even on the summer school options, the transition section. That really impressed me that you, that we were able to garner that information from our surveys. And to really understand that kids are going to have a lot of anxiety going into the unknown. They've never, you know, especially fifth grader. Ever done this and they haven't really been around any of their friends. And so I know that the anxiety levels of our kids is going to be. High. So the fact that we've also offered in some of this transitioning support for the kids over the summer before they even walk through the doors. Equity lens to start, kind of start that being our grounding point.
I want to make sure too that we're clear about the strategies, about the supports. That all children will be receiving those supports. I know we have targeted supports for identified student groups. But I want to make sure that it's understood by any parent that looks at this. That any child that needs the support is going to get their, get the support that they need.
One more question. Sorry. Back to the, I guess, the people that are doing the supporting, right, in the positions. The transition supports, those are those new positions that were, are those new positions? Transition supports.
Not new positions. So we have, we have transition coaches that are already present in buildings. And so it's more about how we're utilizing their skill set to do exactly what Jenny was saying, make sure that they, their anxiety is lower. And they feel prepared to go into a whole new setting with kids they've never met.
Because we have them at high school, right?
And middle school as well.
And so the elementary, like the.
Yeah.
This is also added on as an option as part of the summer school program and to take a transition class in August.
I guess I'm just, I guess, I just worry about the, the people, right? And then, you know, because we already have such a, our people are structured and I just want to make sure that we have enough people to help. Do this work forward. And so I guess that's where my concern always comes in.
So some of what we've, what we've done. And it didn't necessarily reacting. It's like we've, we've probably staffed more teachers than we normally would. To kind of keep some of the classes smaller, the. Typically, we would maybe staff for thirty two and a thirty or thirty two in a middle school or a high school. We're lower than that because of the three feet and, and we have ways of reacting to that. But the S R funds do give us opportunities to react in ways we typically haven't had. So I do think if there's themes, as Julie and Clarissa mentioned, that we start to see, when you start to actually look at the data. We'd have opportunities to react to that rather than. And it's, it's not, it's not ideal to try to do that in the fall. But we do have the ability to try to be somewhat flexible and creative and trying to do some, some things staffing wise to help out. It'll be nice. It would be nice if we get to a point in time where if we need to add new step, that actually there are people willing to apply for the job soon. So that's, I don't think anything that's just education is, is dealing with, I think a lot of. Businesses are having a hard time finding people, but we do have the potential to react if we see. An area that we want to make that happen in. We've also, some of the things like, you know, transitions, we have, we have staffing in our, in our elementaries at the beginning of year to help. Younger kids transition in. We have intervention parents that we have made available. Some of the staff that we've used for COVID rooms, you know, we'll continue some of that staffing and we anticipate some of that may be able to use and be used in other ways in our buildings. So. Think we'll be able to react to support.
One more. And this is more for Mike than anybody else, but we've got, this is all supported by the S R stimulus funds that have come in. All these summer programs that in any other year have been an extra, right? We've, you've been very confident about the financial ability.
With the S R funds?
Yeah, with the answer.
Yeah, the S R funds, you know, some of the S R funds are set aside for the summer and additional support, which. The additional support isn't just defined as summer school. It could even be additional staff during the school year to drive class sizes down. It could be additional intervention staff to support throughout school year. Can be tutoring, could be in a number of things, but the S R funds, the, the rules around the S R funds are much more flexible. To allow us to use, use them creatively to support. This work as well as just offsetting what we need to do to use to offset as we move forward.
Are we counting the expenditures in a different program code than basic education or special education?
So you, you, yeah, it's, it's, I don't know the number, but there's a code, like a number, that's the S R funds code. That started this year with S R two and then it will continue into S R three. But yeah, so we have to journal voucher. If we don't get it set up from the beginning, like summer school is all going to come out of S R fund. So we know that'll just get charged directly to that account this summer. Next year, we'll identify certain staff that will charge to us. We try to get it done early so we don't have to go. We try to get it done early so we don't have to go back and make adjustments. I see Janine on her head because it's really the people that you see being recognized today from H R or it's in accounting that are having to go back and try to make those adjustments after we draw. Okay, well, now that we figured it all out, this is what we really need to put in the, into the S R account, let's say. So, yeah, that's a different, it's a different program code.
Do you know if the codes are uniform across the districts in the state?
Or S R, and they're uniform because it's all drives through the accounting manual. But the S R would be uniform. And then the activity codes that money spent out of would be uniform. When you get down within teaching, let's say, it may mean one thing to us and something completely different in Vancouver or another district in the state. But you get a general idea of how people are spending their, their funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
So I would assume then that we'll be having some updates on what's being applied to those, to that account.
Yeah.
Oh, what's
Yeah, what, yeah, what, what we, you know, we received, I think, four point nine million in the first year and then another eighteen million, and then the last round is over forty million. And it's really available to us for an over three year period. So as we get to the this year and and get the sense of, of, you know, we weren't anticipating some transportation money that's helped us from the legislature. That means we need to use, we can use less of the S R funds. But we certainly can give an update on, okay, this is what we spent it on this year. Round one, we spent it on this. Round two, we've spent X out of the eighteen million on these things. And in the budget, this is what we've got set aside that we think, which helps us understand this is what we have left over this two year period or thereabouts. Honestly, without, without, now, I was going to mention this in the budget update, but without the federal S R funds and without the state money that was allocated through the legislative budget that we just saw, we would have been in, and not just Evergreen, but all districts would have been in a world of, of hurt in terms of the financial situations for school district. We really have legitimately been bailed out from really the S R funds more than anything else.
But we have to be careful about what we're using them for because and at a certain point, and you want to, you don't want to start something that we can't continue to fund.
Correct.
After that money's gone.
Correct. Yeah, you can't, it's not an ongoing thing because the, it will run out. There won't be an S R four or an S R five. The money will run out, which is why we want to make sure that we're doing things wisely and we can use that over a two or three year period.
Well, I think too it'd be important because if we see something we're funding with this money and it's working really well, we need to be advocating for that support in funding from whichever, you know, the state or or the local people through a levy, it'll be too important if it's really working. So keeping track of that, being able to accurately say that this is what we spent to save our kids. That's important.
I think our June meeting will be too soon to hear, but July it'll be nice to hear an update on how the first couple of weeks went of the summer program. I'm excited to hear about that. And I think it'll be interesting to hear about how we're spending that money and how we go into next year too, because if we need to add support site, I really want us to be thinking about that. Because I think this first year is going to go most, I mean, every year is important, but first year coming out of it to get our kids back on track. So, thank you.
So much, ladies. Okay, next up, we have the good news report.
I think we have a resolution.
Do I have a resolution? Oh, you're right. Sorry about that. Never mind. I want to also make sure that there's nobody in the audience that has anything that they'd like to ask or comment on or subject. Hey, so I will entertain a motion for resolution number sixty five oh four academic and student well being recovery plan.
I move approved recovery plan. Mission to S P I.
Hey. All in favor? I Okay, great. Thank you for all the good work on that. Okay, Gail. Our director of communications, Gail Spohler, said, give us some good news.
Austin.
It's here.
Okay. So we start our good news tonight with a look at some of the teacher appreciation celebrations. We feature some that happened at Orchard's Legacy and Illahi. And we then move on to highlight students at Harmony showcasing their cultures and backgrounds during their spirit. Pioneer students in McKenna Pauline and Amanda Gorring's classes have adopted a tiny house community in Multnomah County. The residents who live in these tiny houses have been unhoused in the past. And so they will be moving into this tiny house community. They'll have their tiny houses decorated with inspirational scenes and artwork that were created by our students at Pioneer Elementary. Follow how that community works as well as part of their study about community and homeless. Also last month, our partners at Chartwells had a celebration. They celebrated school lunch hero day and they had festive aprons on as they served our students. One of the things that we've missed, among other things during the last school year, is the introduction that elementary students hit for band instruments. For any of you parents who have had students who've come home and said, guess what? We got to try the clarinet or we got to try the trumpet. Now I want to play, play one of those instruments. Shaheila's band teacher, Scott Winks, took his show on the road, walked over to Illahi with a group of instruments and did a little impromptu demo and played for students during recess. And so I'm sure we will have some future bands students coming out of that demo. And art projects continue with more sharing of student art. This time, Fisher's Landing, you can go to Dot Stonets and see artwork from Fisher's Landing students displayed there. And then I think many of you will recognize Brianna Romero, the student artist that Art Discovery Coordinator Karen Rivera shared with you at a recent board meeting. So put that on there so everyone can see how, how excited she was about our projects. And last month had a lot of celebrations. I had teacher appreciation, we had lunch earlier, she'll hear a little bit. We had nurse appreciation. There's even a school communications appreciation day. Well, it was bigger than that Earth Day. And so that was highlighted by some kindergartners doing some yard work at Sifton in their garden boxes. Seven members of the Heritage F B L A team have won state honors and they will continue on to the virtual national competition in June. And this year's Marshall Leadership Awards were also held virtually. But I can tell you that didn't diminish the accomplishments of the youth leadership award winner who was Union's own, Phil Singh. You'll want to watch the clip as he talks about, well, as he's introduced and then he talks about what he's done and more importantly, what he's going to do back the night of the Marshall Awards. After he accepted the award, he was leaving for basic training. So very inspirational. There were also two other award finalists from Evergreen for the Marshall Youth Award, Katie Nguyen from Hanradalax and Piper Lemon from Heritage. Then there's another fun video to watch. A group of Union students who turned some downtime during the pandemic into creating a game. And then they launched a student run business and they are becoming quite successful. So you want to take a look at that one. And then speaking of games, a district team has won the Rocket League Esports State Tournament. And I'm going to have to confess, Rob, I have no idea what Rocket League is. You'll share.
Rocket League is a video game that's played online where you run cars around and crash them into one another. Cars have rockets mounted to the top.
Well, they're, they're obviously good at crashing those cars because they did win the state tournament.
Run a ball around too. I don't play, but I've seen the screenshots and it's pretty intense.
Two Union High School students, Carol Kaplan and Ashley Lynn, have been selected as National Merit Scholarship winners. And then Frontier's Transition Coach, Bree Gardner, was recently invited and took part in a discussion with Governor J Inslee about the district's response and partnership with the Clark County Food Bank. And as you know, from again, from the last board meeting, we also recently celebrated National School Nurses Day. And so you see some photos that we captured throughout the district. And our high schools have been very fortunate to receive a large donation of ten thousand dollars from the Evergreen School District Foundation to cover A P test fees this year. Jeff Angelo, the foundation president, presenting a check to cover some of those test fees. And then last month, you authorized the allocation of funds from the two thousand eighteen bond measure to replace Millplain Elementary, making it the eighth elementary to be replaced out of that bond measure. And you'll want to see the video announcing that decision and how happy the school folks are at their, their new elementary soon to come. And that's this month's good news.
Gail?
Bill, standing? The window is closed.
Okay, well, next we will have a budget update.
Real quick. I, I mentioned the significant impact of, of the S R funds as well as the transportation funds. They will allow us to break even this year. That's what I expect our year to look like at the end of the year, which is significant considering if you think back on the recap, you know, losing over twenty million dollars worth of revenue, having to go through horrific furloughs, impactful staff changes throughout the system between buildings. And it's been a very difficult year for everyone. And our staff have had a lot of sacrifices throughout the year. And at the end of the year, it would have been nice if we'd had a sense that the S R funds might have been there sooner rather than later and not have avoided a lot of the difficulties that we, we had to work through. But I anticipate this year ending up being about a break even. And I will do as you, we will bring information to our July meeting on the S R funds. Both, both the first, because we spent a little bit last year, like, like maybe two million of the first five, three million plus the S R two funds. And maybe just kind of give a little more of a picture of all three of them and how they work. I also want to mention, one of the things that happened when the legislature changed our the McCleary funding and they particularly changed the way levies work. It kind of set the levy at a dollar amount per student. For, in our case, it's, well, it's a dollar amount per thousand that you can claim up to depending upon your assessed value is. The levy equalization in the district has always in the past been measured by how do our values stack up against the values in the rest of the state? And are we, are our taxpayers having to pay more to receive levy funds than, let's say, because of the value in King County or Seattle or Mercer Island? They've changed that with an equalization formula that basically says the state will equalize up to a certain amount of money for each student, sixteen hundred dollars, let's say. But that number only increases by inflation every year. And the assessed value increases that you see have an impact on that calculation. So our values have been growing in this county anywhere from five. And I think the estimate for next year is about twelve percent for tax purposes. It used to be if Clark County increased twelve percent, pretty much everybody else increased twelve percent. So it didn't really impact your levy equalization because it was always just a measurement of how you matched with other districts in the state. Well, now, if values increase greater than inflation, which they clearly are, it means that the amount of money that the state is contributing to levy equalization gets smaller and smaller and smaller. So where, you know, we did receive some funds that Senator Cleveland helped us with a few years ago. But this past year was the first year we were, we were done with that. And I think we received about twelve million in equalization funds. The estimate for next year is for us to drop down to six million. What it means is our values are increasing faster than inflation and we're catching up to that sixteen hundred dollar per student threshold. It's, I, I, I think it's not more than a few years before we don't have levy equalization any longer. And there isn't a mechanism for offsetting that other than the increase in a local levy. So I'm just sharing that information as something that we'll have to consider as we start thinking about the levy that will be run a little less than a year from now or depending on when the boards can be February, it could be March, April or May of next year. It's, it's a changing, it's a, it's a dynamic that hasn't existed for us with levy equalization. We've always been a property poor district, but the new formula they created has, is one that just makes it much more problematic for really all districts, I think, in the state. And you can make the case that state was aware that that would happen. Just over time, their obligation to equalization declines, declines unless there's a change in the formula. So it might be something that part of our advocacy also is with the state. You know, Rob mentioned advocating for either state or local. I mean, that's something again, where we're shifting the burden from the state to the local taxpayer in this case. So just wanted to share that. And then the last thing I'll mention is just budget work continues. The, the state revenue estimate where we project our revenues is in place. So we have the ability to estimate our revenues for next year. Finalizing the personnel work between Jennifer Jacobson and Cindy Madsen in the H R department, getting ready to pull that together. The other budget pieces are in place so that we can start kind of finalizing where we're at and then have this determination of the S R funds and how many S R funds we, we need to. But they're all working together really well. Appreciate Jennifer and appreciate Cindy and the other folks in H R on that. And that's my report.
And next up, we have board comments.
I wanted to make mention of a we don't get out to school events quite the way we used to in years past. But Leanne O'Neil worked for the Mara Group and got a webinar together with a presentation from the Department of Health about the emergency. And it had a lot of really clearly presented data about the recovery. And D O H has got a, a name that's failing me, of course. But they were going to send some slides, a, a name for those who aren't going to come out of the recovery in as good a circumstance as most people. I had an opportunity to ask them questions about what they recommend for schools and for school leaders and teachers and what to watch for. And they said pretty much point blank. We can expect a lot of extra escalated behavior and a lot of extra withdrawn behavior in kids and in adults. So it's really fortunate that we have the funds to pay attention to social emotional things. I like to get the slide deck to the rest of you as soon as I get it in the email. And I appreciate that they put that together. It was Mara Group and, and text over with the city council facilitating some really good presentations about social emotional well being in the community at large. Other than that, there are three. Other than that, there are three uh, right now, there are three legislative positions that could be profitable for us to sign on to. As others have proposed them, uh, I'm going to like to bring that up in the June meeting or the July meeting because there's time, but.
Get copies of what it is so that we can read them ahead of time?
Yes, yes. Um, and you can ask for agenda items, but that'll be an agenda item for maybe July.
Uh, Region Six meeting tomorrow night. Join me virtually.
Having dinner brought over to our house.
If it's going to deliver.
That that would be, that would be wonderful, wouldn't it? Maybe I'll suggest that. I'll have to text him and say, we're all expecting a box to show about our stuff tomorrow.
Um, I guess for me in the last, I two weeks, we had the last uh, last equity conference last week. That was a two day. Watched the first day. That's got the recordings, so I can watch the second. Equity Leadership Training, second day of it. That was, that was a, but I did see of it. Quick, it was an hour-long presentation um on history and so I know that it was a lot.
Um, Cindy and I had the um, dealt so on courageous conversations. That work, which has been fabulous. Um, and then I've been just brine stone on on a lot of things. We've been, you know, we we're interacting a lot with constituents over different issues. Um, that's been helping inform our thinking on a lot of this, a lot of this stuff. So I appreciate that. Add to the mix.
I could ask, was that Mary's presentation on the history of race? Uh, did she talk about redlining or is it broader than that?
All of it.
It was all of the things.
Ellen, as you know, she's everything that she's I'm glad that they were providing us the copies of everything because and it's recorded. So they recorded. How there was a lot of, a lot of detail and a Yeah, so there was a lot. It touched on a lot of things. Touched on a little bit of everything. That's a lot of, um, a lot of knowledge, just more of facts. It was a lot of facts. Yes, and then links and um about what she, I mean, she probably could have talked to us the whole today. Though she had her work cut out to bringing it and.
Hey, um, the next step, we have future agenda items. So is there anything that anyone would like to add to our agenda?
I I have something that Gil reminded me of it during the Good News Report. Uh, when she brought up Mill Plain and the uh, the bond project I was thinking about because I know we have a bond update and we had this our last one. And uh, was that last meeting that you passed the resolution for the?
That wasn't last meeting. I think it was about two or three ago. I think it was the end of March, maybe.
So we
But we only have one in April. Yeah, we talked about it.
So we
We might have been asked to two or three times, but needed to do it again.
Because we had the 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 bond, obviously, we were ahead of budget. We had the extra funds and that's allowing us to uh do Mill Plain. So I, and I know that we had that other list of things that was on there. I'm just curious about like what uh, just to make sure that we all know what's on that list. Because I don't really think that I know for sure that the thing that we talked about. And then maybe just the cost breakdown too, some of those things, just so we have, we're all aware. I mean, we can get added our bond update. I don't know.
But we have another bond update. Is that in? It's June. So we can talk about that if that then.
That one, because usually that one stays really focused on the construction stuff, but if there's anything else in there, um, so that might not be something the architects and contractors are working on. Just I don't know if there is anything, but if there is there's stuff, we want to know about it.
I guess just because we haven't, because we missed the last one and we just haven't heard anything for a while. So it'd just be kind of nice to have a breakdown of all the projects that are happening right now. We're going to have larger projects that are happening.
I think they go through most of the projects, but sometimes they get into more of the architectural, what's happening as opposed to more like the meetings we have, Sue.
When I say, I I was aware, I'm becoming aware of uh, of an alumni uh desire, the alumni of Mountain View High School, I'm as interested as any of the other alumni there, uh, to get a chance to walk through the building before it's demolished uh as we get to the construction there. I thought I'd make mention of that, just hoping that an opportunity will arise for that sometime.
Would imagine, because that's, we got another year for that, the year plus, right? I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to reach out to the community and let folks uh go in and take a look. One last, maybe even shoot a hoop one more time.
That'd be fun.
At Prairie, I know if Prairie High School was being uh removed, that there's a board member that would like to take one more shot at the at the gym of Prairie High School. Yeah, I'm sure we'd do that, yeah. Uh, we, yeah, we held stuff aside and were able to redistribute. There was no value to those bricks. Other than being thrown away, we held on to some and cleaned them up and
It saved us money not having to dispose of it.
Correct, correct. Yeah, I think, I think whenever you have buildings going away, there's people that have a lot of reminiscing about the time they spent in those. I remember a few things in Mountain View High School myself, and they weren't pleasant because I played for Ford and we always lost when we played.
Well, there you are.
Have any other items to add to our agenda? Okay. Next, we have citizen comments. This is a time where citizens may address the board about anything that is not on the agenda, is not legal or personnel in nature, and we limit our um, comments to three minutes. Have anyone on the list? Oh, okay, so talk to us tonight. Okay. Um, now the board is going to go into recess where we can sign documents for um all the necessary items. Then we will reconvene for a board workshop where we will have a discussion regarding um student resource officers. We'll have a teaching and learning equity update, a legislative update. Then we will go into an executive session where we will review the performance of a public employee. Hey, thank you for joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you. We will now
Ready to roll.
We will now reconvene to our board workshop. First up is, it is on.
All right, we're going to start, Marty.
All right, good evening. So uh, this evening, we'll talk about possible course of action with our school resource officers. Um, and I wanted to start by laying a foundation this uh, the bigger picture before we take it down to exactly where we're at with with our schools. So we're very fortunate in Clark County to have a Clark County Juvenile Justice Council. And uh Superintendent Merlino's uh, one of the council members, uh, he's uh had his representative, Bill Omen and uh myself going to meetings, but you can see our juvenile uh justice council is made up of our elected prosecutor, Tony Golick, uh, the elected sheriff, uh, the chief of Vancouver Police, the chief of battleground police, judges, defense attorneys, prosecuting attorneys, and Vancouver School District representatives, as well as a professor from WSU Vancouver and uh, other people related to uh juvenile justice in this community. It's it's unique in that all these people come together and talk about issues related to uh, the disparity in equity in arrests uh in the fact that uh, you know, the uh Clark County is part of the JDI program and has been for years. And Clark County has been doing restorative practices for over 20 years. We had uh administrators from uh Clark County Juvenile Justice come and give presentations on victim offender meetings and uh to our staff at Heritage High School, for example, uh, to talk about how do we put together when somebody's been harmed and we bring that back together in in a way that's accountable, meaningful, but still doesn't have implications of like criminal conduct on uh, as a record uh of a student. We know that with every arrest that is made of a student, we double their chance that they won't uh graduate. Uh, we've seen arrest rates go down uh in the county as a whole, but specifically here at Evergreen Public Schools. And a lot of that is through partnerships and the intentionality that we have of watching what it is that we're doing and how we're doing it with both of our law enforcement agencies. Juvenile Justice Council came up with a goal statement. I think it's important that uh, you know, when they came up with this together, because it guides the work that they're doing, which ultimately guides some of the work that we're doing when it comes to juvenile justice. And I'm going to read it, even though you can all read, because it's it's impactful to know that all those people that I described, elected leaders in in the community, appointed leaders in the community, people that are in the in the uh foxholes right on the front line of juvenile justice, all you subscribe to this statement. "We all desire our kids to grow into healthy, successful, productive, and contributing members of our community. Along the way, we know that they will make mistakes or poor choices. Being held accountable and repairing harm for poor conduct and delinquency is important, but incarcerating children should be the last option. Our goal is to provide kids the tools they need through education and social emotional development that will encourage a sustainable, prosperous outcome for all in an equitable manner. This approach does not ignore incidents of criminal conduct, but is responsive to evidence-based research that has proven to be more effective to reduce juvenile delinquency and increase public safety." So that is the focus of the Juvenile Justice Council and what they're trying to do. Uh, statistics that we do have, arrests here in Evergreen Public Schools. So, starting in 2016, Jody Martin, who's the administrator down at Juvenile Court, would receive all the reports on juveniles that are sent from every agency in the county. He would then look through the reports and keep a spreadsheet on this thing called Excel. It's pretty high speed. And uh, keep track of ethnicity, what organization arrested, did the arrest happen at a school, or so which school, did it happen outside of school in the community? And with that, we were able then, because we couldn't mine that data through the reporting system that law enforcement used. And currently, our two major law enforcement agencies that we have in the county, Clark County Sheriff's Office and Vancouver Police, don't use the same reporting system. So they have problems even seeing each other's reports as it is right now. Through the data that she was mining, we know that in 2016, we, the largest uh s- school district in Southwest Washington, had the most arrests. We had 61, as you can see. But uh, during that time, Jody and I went to Georgetown for a school injustice partnership um program that they had out there. We wrote a capstone project to talk about reducing arrests in our schools. And then we uh made a focus on that. Uh, the Juvenile Justice Center also had a grant for racial and uh the reduction of racial and ethnic dis- uh disparity uh in arrests, and they used that to bring in a group called uh Strategies for Youth out of Massachusetts, who did a a program called Policing the Team Brain, and we put that on in 2018. And we uh opened it up to all law enforcement in the county. And then in 2019 and 2020, uh, we uh recreated the same topics of training and provided that to all of our campus security and all of our school resource officers and opened it again up once to uh other law enforcement in the county and deans and other administrators. And we had great attendance with that. Simultaneously, we were implementing restorative practices in our schools. And uh, the combination of those two, through doing victim offender meetings, knowing that we're intentionally trying to reduce arrests, we started driving our arrest rate down. And you can see in 2017 and 2018, our arrest levels actually in 2018, we ended up on third, even though we're the largest district uh here in Clark County. And then in 2019, our arrests went up again, as they will, um, as we try to work through these things. But then in uh 2020, we're back down to 17. And I apologize for not having the comparative data for 19 and uh 20, but those are ours. And then um, I do have more information that we could break it down. And that's where Clay Moser from WSU Vancouver comes in on the Juvenile Justice Council, because he actually looks specifically at our discipline data and uh our, the arrest data that's given with that uh racial lens to see exactly what the numbers are and how those compare at both the state and national level. And he presents that to the Juvenile Justice Council. Statistics that we haven't kept are things like the tactical support that law enforcement provide us. So over the last 12 months, we haven't had uh school resource officers in our schools. And uh, their partnership has been sorely missed on a lot of uh issues that um are very time-sensitive and important. And some of those things that I've listed here, the tactical support, we had a lockdown at Crestline. I called 311 to try to find out why we were in lockdown. I immediately got put on hold. Seven minutes later, I get taken off hold, but in the meantime, I'd already been notified that Crestline was no longer in lockdown. And then I was able to ask the dispatcher, who was the dispatcher that was dispatching the uh critical incident that happened, which is why he put me on hold, uh, and told me that, you know, somebody dropped, dropped, driven by and thought that somebody was carrying a weapon. It would have been nice to tell our staff at Crestline the reason that we were on lockdown, but I couldn't get that information timely. In the past, I've been able to easily sorry about that, text one of our SROs who's heard it on the radio and able to tell me quickly the reason that we're on lockdown without making phone calls. We also had an incident that happened this year where it was a custody issue and uh a parent took their kids and left with them, and the parent that had the kids contacted us and said that the other parent kidnapped the kid. We're trying to sort it out because then we started getting emails from dad's email claiming to be the kid, but we weren't sure if it was the kid or not, and we weren't even sure like the kid was okay. Or that we didn't know whether law enforcement was even working on it, because we didn't have that relationship with a cop to say, can you check on this and see where it's going? We've had no contact orders, restraining orders, which I understand are civil matters, but it's it's been so nice. But it's it's been so nice having the law enforcement to set us straight on exactly who the respondent is, who the petitioner is, what the limits of it are, et cetera. And then we've had some adult criminal things that have happened that it's nice to have that partnership. And then, of course, classes taught by our SROs. In the classes, I know Deputy McCarthy has done that out at Heritage High School. I don't have stats on that, but I know he's done it. And then just being an informal counselor, I know specifically Deputy McCarthy and Officer Knott from Evergreen High School have shared anecdotal stories with me of kids that they've had to deal with who they have intentionally seeked out the next time that they saw them to begin restoring the relationship and to check on them again. So that the only time they dealt with them wasn't during that negative encounter that they had. So anyways, going on the next slide. Our school district borders two major law enforcement jurisdictions, Clark County Sheriff's Office and Vancouver Police. Nine of our schools are located by address in the county, and the rest of them are all in the city. But there are a lot of people that live in the county that send people to a city school, even if they're close by, some of the people on the border schools. So having the partnership between the two is important for us because, as I mentioned already, the report writing systems and we have something happen. The city of Vancouver often will not travel out into the county because it's not the city of Vancouver, but everything within the city of Vancouver is in in the county, so the county will travel into the city to talk to people and do follow up as they need to. Current status quo before COVID hit, we had three city SROs at our three comprehensive high schools in the city, Union, Evergreen, and Mountain View. And we had one county SRO that was out at Heritage High School. The county SRO was responsible for the feeder schools also, which included two of our six middle schools. And then I gotta do math real quick, seven elementaries. So there's a total of seven, eight, oh, six elementaries plus two middle schools and one high school. That's nine schools. And the rest of them were divided up amongst the three BPD SROs. But there's some challenges to that, and the challenge is that the county has contacted us and told us, and not just us, has told Hawkinson, Battleground, Vancouver Public Schools, we don't have the staffing to provide SROs. We need all of our SROs on patrol. So what we're faced with right now is we could be looking at the possibility of not having an SRO at those nine county schools for the entire school year next year, just like we didn't this year. And and we could possibly have SROs from the city of Vancouver because the city of Vancouver isn't in the same position that the county is. So I talked to Clark County Sheriff's Office and I said, so I understand it's a staffing issue. What if we paid for a whole deputy and you were able to backfill that deputy on patrol? Could you then give us a deputy to use as an SRO? And the sheriff's office said, yes, under those conditions, we could. But it would change the funding model from what we've currently paid. What we've currently paid with the sheriff's office is the sheriff's office took the 12 months of salary, took the nine months that they were assigned to our schools and halved it. So we paid half of that nine months. But if we were to buy a deputy, so to speak, we would end up paying vehicle servicing, overtime, retirement, and a host of other things. I've got a full breakdown from the sheriff's office on exactly where that money would go. And what exactly it would cost. The other challenge that we've had with the city of Vancouver is that last year was Brett Olson's last year at Union High School. We had a vacancy right before COVID. Vancouver Police posted the position and nobody put in for it. They posted it again, nobody put in for it, posted it again, nobody put in for it, and then COVID hit. Last thing that we want is somebody working in our schools that doesn't desire to be there. Our other two SROs, Gerardo Gutierrez at Mountain View has kids in the district. I've watched him foot race kids at Y East before, and he always let every kid beat him, even though he's in his full gear, and he gave him stickers at lunchtime. And Tyler Knotts at Evergreen High School, who used to be campus security at Frontier Middle School before he got hired by VPD. He's been brought up in Evergreen Public Schools. Those two are great SROs that understand exactly what it is that we're doing. Basically, what we get to is an option, one possible course of action. Either keep two city SROs that we currently have and buy, pay full fare for a county SRO so that our whole district is covered. Because if we don't do something with the county, then we've got nine of our schools that aren't covered. What we would do with the two SROs in the city is instead of them being assigned to a specific school, they would become district resource officers, and they would both rotate through all the schools. Would intentionally try to make sure that they broke away from their current relationships at both Evergreen and Mountain View, even though we value those relationships. We don't want them to gravitate back to those two schools and leave Union in alert. So we'd put them on a rotation schedule so they would rotate through all the schools. And I called BPD informally, talked to one of the assistant chiefs. Said, what do you think of this idea? They said, it's not a hard no, but we would want to talk about some details. So kind of in this position where I can't bargain because it's not in my realm of bargaining anyways, but at the same time, I'm trying to figure out if we can do things. So I'm asking a lot of questions in preparation for this so that I could tell you whether it's a possibility or not. Another possibility might be that we only keep the two VPD officers because the county has already said they can't provide one. So then if we don't buy one, we can't have one. But if we had two VPD, who would cover the county schools? And is that fair and equitable? And it's not. And then we'd have to see if the law enforcement agencies could reach some kind of agreement that would include probably the city manager, the city council, probably the county council, as well as the chief of police and Clark County Sheriff to let Vancouver Police do law enforcement in the county schools that are in our jurisdiction. So it's a long shot. One other possibility might be to have just one SRO for the whole district. And if we did that, I would recommend the county SRO because 100% of our district is in the county, but only 75% of our district is in the city. But doing that would make him, again, a district resource officer, and it deprives all of these scenarios deprive of the relationship building that we had when we had three from the city and one from the county. The relationship building with the admin in the building, the deans in the building, and the understanding has been valued by all of us, but recognizing that it's increasingly difficult for law enforcement to have patrol officers assigned to the schools as well as, you know, us looking hard at the fact that we do have police in schools and exactly how are police in schools affecting our kiddos? Because we've seen a lot of national statistics that police in schools increases arrests of kids and increases kids' chance of not graduating because of those arrests. Now, also, this, these things change so quickly. I'm on slide 13 now, which is RCW 28A 32124, which was just passed last year, which basically says that there are 12 areas of training that the legislature in the state of Washington recognized that are important for law enforcement to have this training. Training includes things such as adolescent brain development, FERPA, IEPs and 504 plans, just students with disabilities. They're all listed there, but it's really tiny print. My argument for this is when the legislature wrote this, they said, if you're a police officer that works in schools, you have to have these 12 areas of training. So we acknowledge that these 12 areas of training are important if you're going to be working with kids. But we're in a position right now as a, as a state, as a nation, as a city, where we began with crisis intervention training. When CIT training for law enforcement first rolled out, they had a specialist that worked on a shift that was trained in crisis intervention training. The whole shift wasn't trained in it. And that's kind of where we're at here. They recognize that this training is important for people that work with kids, but the only way it's mandated for training in law enforcement is if they're a school resource officer. So since I prepared this presentation, this changed because last month, the governor signed House Bill 1214, which now says not only does law enforcement have to have these 12 areas of training, but but school campus security officers or private security that work with kids also have to have this training. And the great part of this is I told you that in 2018, we had Policing the Team Brain came through. And then in 2019 and 2020, we replicated that training, which are these 12 areas of training. We're already doing that for our people, not only our campus security, but our school resource officers and our deans. So we'll continue doing those things. But the argument again is if we sever relationship with law enforcement, there's no law enforcement in this area that is going to get these 12 areas of training because it's not mandated. But if we have a relationship with law enforcement, they have to have this training. And I would rather have 25,000 students have an opportunity to deal with a police officer that's had these 12 areas of training, than dealing with the same police officers they're going to deal with this summer that haven't had the training. Every night after school, the police officers haven't had this training. So there's that. The other thing I would say is that there's been a national focus on reform in law enforcement. Having spent 16 years in law enforcement myself, I will admit that there's room for improvement. I think that everybody thinks that they can improve what it is that they're doing, but I think that to say that law enforcement is perfect isn't, isn't realistic. If we want to change law enforcement, like we've been doing with the Juvenile Justice Council, I think we need to remain partners with law enforcement because we can't tell them to change if we don't have a relationship, but in partnership with them, while we're teaching them about 504 plans, disabilities and IEPs and giving second chances and restorative practices, then here's a, here's a perfect example. We had a student had a blowout at the transition HCA and started throwing some desks and some other things. And the funny thing is the reason that he had the blowout is because he had some bad behavior and was told that he couldn't come back to school the next day. And when he couldn't come back to school the next day, he had his big blowout. So we got the call that they were calling 911. I walked over from Burgundy. This young man is pacing back and forth outside in his socks because he's walked his shoes off. And he's still elevated, but he's not hurting anybody. He's not a threat to anybody. VPD arrives, running code, and the first person to arrive was a patrol officer who parked halfway from the entrance to HCA, got out of his car, walked up, stood a distance away. He's trying to just gather what's going on. The next car that arrived was Tyler Knotts, our SRO from Evergreen High School, who pulled right up to the front, which you don't do in law enforcement. You don't park right in front of the target you're going to. But he had seen as he pulled in what was going on. He got out of his car and walked over, and the young man that was totally escalated and elevated saw Tyler and ran at him. And then he was bawling, snot coming out of his nose and everything, and just buried it in Tyler's chest and hugged him. And Tyler just stood there while this kid's hugging him. And I looked at the other cop and he was looking at Tyler like Tyler had grown a second head. Because on patrol, you don't let anybody get that close to you. And he was being completely safe with all of the things that he had on him, but he was still comforting this young man who was upset because he didn't get to come to school the next day. That's the kind of interaction I want the police to have with our students, not the standoff. Try to figure out what's going on. Never in a million years consider that kind of comfort to somebody in need. So I don't know what we're going to do, what the decision's going to be made. I've included some other information on here, and some of the things are clickable links. I do want to go down to slide 18, though, because it's a real feather in, in the cap of Heritage High School. When we started our restorative circles in the morning with our kids in every homeroom class, Justin Tanner was the dean at the time, and he kept these stats. They told every teacher, we're going to do restorative circles, and we're going to build community in our classrooms. We're going to reduce the anonymity of disrupting this class from, from having a blowout because you don't care to actually knowing the kids that sit around you and knowing the kids that sit around you care about you. They didn't give any direction to teachers not to write referrals anymore. But the referrals dropped in half at that school once they started building community in their school. And Deputy McCarthy was part of this, like they knew coming up on Christmas break that that's when a lot of kids have a blowout. So they tried to set a high-fiving record at a world record at Heritage High School with Deputy McCarthy and some other people. I just think that, you know, that there's a lot of negative interactions with law enforcement and police that we see on TV. But there's also some really amazing ones that I've been fortunate to have a front row seat to with our SROs in our district that we've worked hard with. One year Deputy McCarthy contacted me and said, well, I almost made it a whole year without arresting a single kid. But this mom told me park her out of it. So we still have that to struggle with sometimes, even as we try to educate parents in the mutual combat. I want to press charges. Do you really want to press charges? Right? Because you realize it's going to do this, this, and this to the kid. Maybe we can get them together and talk it out. We have a lot of work to do as a community because some people in the community think that arrest is a solution for problems too. But those police officers that work in the school every day, our police officers that work in the school every day, have been one of our best advocates to their peers and to the community, and arrest isn't the answer. And doing what we've always gotten has got us to where we're at. It's time to do something different, which is to work through these problems and use arrest as the last resort, not the first. So part of your time, but you have any questions?
I've got a quick question on what it's going to cost to replace the mic up there that
It's Kung-Fu fighting.
How much Shane cares enough to destroy a microphone? So 1214 passed.
Did, and signed it last month. So, and Brian and I already had our meeting on what does this mean for us and find it out, and we're prepared for it. I took a phone call from Battleground, my counterpart at Battleground. I shared the document with him. So it took most of us by surprise, but we already have systems in place here at Evergreen Public Schools to capture a lot of the stuff that 1214 needs, like our, our reporting system that we use at campus security is tied into Skyward. So you type in the student's name and it already pulls all that race and the photo and the student's photo into the report. So we can track all that. That's easy. The other part of complaints against our officers, you know, we have a quick fix for that too. And I think the requirement for this training is fantastic. It's not something we've already been doing it.
That was my question is I had thought that through Safe Schools and some other things that most all the staff with student contact at least in the classroom and at the schools was getting training on, as I look at this list, most of this. I don't know if bias-free policing was part of it. Cultural competency certainly has been, hasn't it? And I just hadn't, I hadn't been told that the bill passed. There have been so many education bills. There's, since we already extended to all staff, what do we need to add in terms of training to comply with the, with the new law?
There's one small piece of it, which is a six, six individual check-ins are required for campus security. A new officer working in a building with students in addition to two on-the-job training days, which we've got that worked in. We have, I, when I came over from the sheriff's office, I took the Field Training Officer Manual that we use at the sheriff's office, a three-month training manual. And I gave it to Tyler Knotts, who was a middle school campus security and a male. Campus security and a male and Stacy Woolridge, who's a female and a high school officer, and I paid. Them to go through the, the law enforcement training manual and convert it to campus security with all their training knowledge and experience. So we already have a three-month training manual that covers. All the parts of campus security that they would need to go through. And uh, so that covers the on-the-job training part that's required by the bill, but the six check-ins. Uh, is something new that we're just going to have to capture. But it's not that it isn't happening. In fact, our addition of deans to the middle school. Made that really simple because now the deans can pretty work in unison with each other for both the training component and the tracking uh, component, so. I, I love that we have middle school deans now, it works really, really well with campus security.
So then you have the uh, racial and ethnic uh. Data behind these referrals. For all of the schools, I think we see that in K P I meetings, can we? Yeah. So, thank you.
I, I'm curious, because you know, we hear like from the national perspective. Fight a movement against S R Os. What is your experience with the S R Os that have been working in our schools? How do the principals feel about them? How do the teachers feel? And more, most importantly, how do our kids feel about the S R Os? Do you have a idea?
The part of uh, the R C W three twenty, uh, sorry, twenty-eight A three twenty-one-two-four, which House Bill twelve fourteen. Amendment to or change. Uh, includes a, a component of uh, getting feedback from students and families at the end of the year, but since that first came out. Um, that, that's one part of it that um, we still need to finalize, how exactly are we going to get that feedback? So um, I can't. Can't tell you exactly how. Students and families feel about that without the evidence behind it. But uh, as far as our staff go, I can't tell you, I, I submitted a. Short survey, a two-question survey, basically, how would you feel if you were told we couldn't have our S R Os anymore and what would be your biggest concern? Benefits. And and they've uh, multiple of them have filled that out, but I failed to include it in, in here. But the feedback that I get from most of them is that they feel safer when their law enforcement is there as a resource that. Picking up the phone to call three one one uh, is such an act. Like it's an intentional act of, it's not nine one one, but it's three one one, it's still the same thing. Uh, and we even get calls every now and then about like, I need to report this to CPS, yes, you report that to CPS, we're mandatory reporters, it's a step. But with law enforcement working in the building, they become so familiar with them, they don't feel that it's as officious. Which is exactly the purpose, because cops everywhere are just people. Edit, they have a uniform and they give off a vibe because. It's uh, for, there's a twenty-one-foot rule in law enforcement. Meaning you get, which is exactly why a teaser shoots twenty-one feet. But in twenty-one feet, which is roughly as far away as we are right now. You could be standing there and make a decision to hurt me and you could get to me before I could process that you were about to hurt me and I could draw my. Firearms and protect myself. So law enforcement likes it when people are not standing close to them. And when you get somebody that is okay with being in a student center. With people all around them, which we have with our S R Os. But it's not every S R O that gets to that level of comfort, so then they end up. Putting off an arrow of stay away from me or you're not welcome, which that's not what they're trying to say, but they, their own safety doesn't feel. Good and police officers wear bulletproof vests, we call them bulletproof vests, but they're not bulletproof, body armor. To protect them from their own firearm. You know, like when I was community outreach sergeant, I would ask people. How many calls do you think a police officer goes to where there's a gun involved? And some people would say maybe two a night, maybe three a night, and the answer is every single call you go to, because you have one. And if somebody disarms you and uses against you. So anyways, all that to say. The feedback anecdotally I get from our admin and staff is that they're a valuable resource, that they like having them in the building, they feel safer with them there. But I have also read a lot of information about Denver severing ties with their S R Os. Because they had them in middle schools and high schools. Portland Public Schools severing ties with their S R Os and neither one of those organizations paid for their S R Os. Right? Like Portland. Portland Public Schools didn't pay for their S R Os, the city of Portland paid for it the final year they had it, one point four million dollars, and before that, Portland Police Bureau paid for their S R O program. So and Denver had a, a grant for seven hundred thousand dollars or whatever. Anyways. The last couple of months, we weren't sure exactly when some school boards made the decision not to continue their law enforcement. And a lot of thought to it, because I wasn't sure exactly where you guys are, I don't know where you're at still. Uh, but um, my, my preference would be to continue those relationships because. I do think that there's room for change, i.e. reform, improve way that we're dealing with kids. Paper just in the last couple of days showed a former student of ours. That we. Had a meeting about. A before he was arrested. Uh, that started off his whole last four arrests that he's had, where we were going to try to have a one-on-one to support him. Uh. Don't think, I mean, that had nothing to do with our S R Os and him, but. We have other students that um, there are. I think because of the R C W that requires a training for law enforcement, I think that that training is invaluable for law enforcement. Deputy McCarthy has led training and victim offender meetings. Had a student that tore up the uh, football field before we put in the turf field. Maybe about this, I don't know. Tore up the football field at Heritage High School and then Instagrammed the whole thing, so we knew who did it. And when Deputy McCarthy went out to contact him. He called me up and said, hey, I don't want to charge this kid with a felony, are you okay with that? And I was like, yeah, I'm okay with that. Uh, what are we going to do instead, you know? And he said, well, we've got a plan. So the football team didn't, they weren't happy with their, their field being torn up, so they did a victim offender meeting, they put the kid with the football team. Talked it out to explain that this wasn't about tearing up your football field, I was just having fun, I'm sorry I didn't think about you. Realize that you weren't intentionally doing it to us, okay, we're not going to beat you up when you come back to school. And then the kid went up to uh. Uh, the Washington Youth Academy. And got promoted multiple times while he's there because it's so structured, he had to get up at six A M and they'd come home at a certain time. And he thrived in that structured environment, which he was. Um, before, which caused him to do the cookies. When I get a cop that calls me and says it, okay, not to charge this kid. And here's another example from Deputy McCarthy specifically. We had a blowout at one of our middle schools and. A kid ended up punching one of our campus security officers in the face in the classroom in front of all the other kids. And when I got the call, I was emotional about it and I said, well, we can't have that. All Deputy McCarthy and I said, I need you to go to this school. And handle this situation, this kid and that kid and that kid, they were all doing this. And then that kid punched security in the face and Deputy McCarthy said, really Shane? You told me you don't want me to arrest kids. If I go to that school and arrest that kid. From what you've told me, I'm going to also have to arrest this other kid and that other kid. Because they were involved in it too, is that what you want me to do? And I was like, I'll call you back, hung up on him. That's what I want our law enforcement to do, to say, really? Because. When we get emotional about it, that's not the time to be making decisions, the time is to stay at the, our goal is zero arrests. Zero arrests is what we want. But the safety component, the fact that law enforcement exists in the community. If we protect all of our kids from ever having an involvement with law enforcement or being around them. They're eventually going to have to deal with law enforcement anyways, maybe we can. Share that experience, the shared experience of pep assemblies and. Presentations and seeing them in the hallway and high-fived and all those things to understand that. That guy's not Officer Knots, but he's pretty cool. Or maybe he's like Officer Knots, who's pretty cool. Or maybe he's like Deputy McCarthy. And we can train them in those twelve areas because. I haven't had an offer from either other agency to go give the rest of their patrol. Training in adolescent brain development or students with disabilities or any of the other twelve things that are listed in, in that bill. But the ones that we work with, we get to train in those things.
Thoughts? I have a question. So I'm, you've put out all these different scenarios. Would you stick with the status quo or how we've had it, if it were?
My recommendation going forward would be to. Word for by, but to pay full fare for Clark County Sheriff's Office so that we can have a deputy in our county. Try to move forward with the city of Vancouver with two officers instead of three. Offset of that cost for the third officer would help pay. For that added amount that we have to, so that Clark County Sheriff's Office can completely backfill on patrol. The benefit with that is um, the S R O that we get for the next six years, if we entered into a contract like that. Would not have to ever, like you've got to work graveyard patrol, they wouldn't have to, they'd still have to go to. Our training and firearms training and those things. But they could never be pulled back away from us because of staffing issues, because they would be completely removed from the department staffing. And it would also mean we'd get them in the summer. So for police activities leagues or help with uh, strategic planning or any of those things that I might need throughout the summer, we would have a police officer and typically we haven't. And then with the city of Vancouver, I think that we can sell to them because they've had problems filling that third one anyways. That they probably need people on patrol also, so having just two and making them district. Um, city resource officers, not assigning them to a specific school, but rotating them through. And then also. That solution would reduce the number of S R Os we have, so if there are. People in the community that think we need less police in schools, we would be having less police in schools, but I think. Put us in a dangerous position of having no police in schools or no relationship with them or no training in the. Areas that we need, so that'd be my recommendation, try to, try to buy one and keep the two and try to work with both agencies to make that happen.
Mike, does that keep us the same amount we've been spending?
Roughly. So a bit less probably because we were paying the county for part of one and we were paying the city full freight for three.
County's number came in higher than I expected.
But it also gives perspective on the city's number then for all these. So uh, i- it's similar.
So two from Vancouver and one from Clark County is the same cost as before. What's the differential for three from Vancouver and one from Clark County?
Well, the differential would be you're paying full for Clark County versus paying. Less than half of Clark County, I would imagine, so probably another hundred plus thousand.
I'm thinking the third V, the third V P D uh, S R O. Is that a hundred plus though?
Say that one more time. Yeah, we pay for three in the city now, full freight, so all we would be doing is paying full for the county. Which is about a hundred twenty thousand more than what we're paying for the full, because we don't pay full for the county, we haven't historically.
How much is one V P D?
V P D?
Yeah.
One thirty-five, one forty, something like that?
Okay.
But I think the county, the county you're saying would be year-round, the city's really school year. That's a distinction between the two also.
Works out a different, so the city gets forty-five minutes of comp time every single day. Um, that's part of their contract and then that comp time builds up and then they use that for vacation in the summer. So that's how they sell it to the position to city S R Os. And then the county um. But I will say that the deputy that we have um, had for the last five or six years at Heritage High School, having been a school teacher for ten years and um. Pretty special when it comes to S R Os, like even. Done training in victim offender meetings and.
Like I had an opportunity with Shane to talk to a couple of students and I think they were in the heritage theater, weren't they? They, I think they were heritage students.
Uh, yes, I think, well, yeah.
And their feedback was exactly that positive, they really respected that officer. Deputy. Forgive me, I'm, I'm in computer sciences.
So the county, the county person people did terroristic, right?
Uh, there would probably be some politics with that, just because the city's territorial about the city. But yes, the badge says Clark County and when I was Clark County Sheriff Deputy. Our county is Clark County and that's how most of the deputies feel.
So that would be a conversation, so we, we, we need to come to an agreement on the base contract with the city of Vancouver and things we would recommend changing that they've. They've not had in the contract, uh, so just kind of waiting for direction on. That conversation with the Chief McElvein. And then we'd also want to have that conversation about the crossover.
Yeah, those are six-year contracts?
Oh, it's an annual contract, but I think it renews for.
Oh, the House Bill makes it an annual, it has to be reviewed every year.
Right.
So you're, are you looking for direction?
I think the biggest thing is just the general uh. Conceptually, I mean, because we can work out the, the two and one, I think the issue with that is not having a solid third. And, and also not necessarily having the ability to influence who the third might be. That's, I think, a significant part of the recommendation, but I think the biggest thing was making sure that there wasn't i- interest in the board saying, no, we don't want them at all. So as long as there's interest in maintaining a pret- uh, uh, a representation or presence. Uh, we can, we can work the last piece of it out, but I don't want to, I don't want to start going down the road with something that you, you, you all don't support.
Have there been discussions among the affinity groups, uh, Clarissa's sort of wheelhouse? About police in schools and how they're perceived by. Um. Students' color and their, and their families. Complicated. Appreciate it, thank you.
Sounds though that that's an opportunity to have a conversation about what kids feel that they need. And want for uh, for that position and that can inform how we. 特定 what we want as a school district. Um. It looks like part of that. Bill has a student-based component. So. I guess I'll just leave back here as far as I'm, I'm moving forward with keeping. The S R Os, I like the two and th- two, I'm. Bottle, I guess, um, for now, um. But I would like to see Clarissa's. But I would like to see Clarissa's. Called in the question about where there could be some challenges there. Um. What can we do to make it the best possible experience for everybody? The SRO, the. Families. That that would be a goal to have. Exactly.
Well, I I I would support the two and one idea because I'm confident um. In Shane's ability to work with the groups and have them all come together, and I also think that at some point. Somewhere, some someday we will have to call police in. And I think it'll be better that we have that relationship and partnership and we keep moving on it and so um. That it is more restorative and we figure out how to work what's best with the student. Just like all the examples that you gave um. About Deputy McCarthy and Heritage and hoping that those things continue. So.
Very dramatic. Um, I for one do not support having SROs in schools at all. And I have a lot of reasons for that. Mostly they struggle around this idea of equity. And how policing of people of color happens in the real world. It's just a fact that people of color are arrested, charged and imprisoned more than. People. Who are not of color. And that includes our kids. Our kids in our schools, the kids that we have been elected to protect. Get arrested by our SROs. Get arrested by police. And imprisoned for things that white kids don't. That is happening in Evergreen. And we can't deny that. The more involvement with the system a child has. The worse they are going to be for the rest of their lives. The more likely they are to recidivate. More likely they are to have more contact in the future with the system. So the first time we get a kid involved in the system, even if it's. You know, in the Clark County juvenile justice system where they get to do diversion. It's still on their record. It still counts. They still go to jail sometimes. They still have to be involved with probation counselors. And that speaks loudly to how likely it is that we're going to see them again as an adult. In the criminal justice system. We do not have control over an officer or deputy who is an SRO. They're not picked by us. We don't get to interview them. We don't get to sit on that interview panel. We don't get to train them. They're not ours. They're the police's. I don't like. The optic of having police officers in our schools and the lack of trust that shows that we have in our children. Why do we police schools? We don't police malls. We don't police bars. We don't police restaurants. Why do we pick schools to police? And if it's the argument that, oh, they're there to help keep things safe in the case of a school shooter. Out of two hundred incidents of school shootings. SROs were able to intervene in only two. That's one percent. That's not worth it if that's the reason to have an SRO in place. They are not making our kids safe. Our SROs are trained police officers. They're trained to look at people as threats. They're looking at us our kids as threats. Data shows that schools with more police, more SROs are more likely to refer kids to law enforcement. Which leads to charges, which leads to arrests. Black students are more likely to be arrested than all other students while at school. We have incidents in our country. Of a six-year-old black child being handcuffed by an SRO. While she was sobbing. We have an incident of an eleven-year-old black girl being shoved against a wall by an SRO. They're police. They're trained as police officers first and foremost. Which as Shane indicated, they do look at people as threats even though they're SROs. I would rather the money go. Somebody that can actually, in my opinion, benefit our children, which is mental health counselors. Support staff. For when children are there. We don't need a police officer in tactical uniforms. With a gun on their hip. Or a taser. Being the one to comfort a child. When they're in a stressed-out moment if we had more mental health counselors available, more support staff available. In those situations. Having a police car out in the parking lot of a high school. On a daily basis. Just think of the impression that that sends to the children as they're walking into that school. And yes, I agree, it would be great if we had. Are all of our children have wonderful relationships with the police. But the fact of the matter is, is that policing. In the United States is biased. And something has to change systemically, significantly. In order for that to change. For our kids in our schools. So we are sending our children of color into a school where they are seen as a threat. Whether it's consciously or not by that SRO, they are seen as a threat. And as someone to protect against. Not to protect. And these are the reasons why I do not support having SROs in our schools at this time.
Um. So I I guess. There's. Multiple positions in which I sit on this topic. Um, I would also like to just say that. Having this conversation. A. Is. Has not gone unnoticed. Um. I've always. Always been very. Part of of our school SROs. Um, I have seen them in the halls of our schools. I have sat. With them while mentoring with the police. I've built relationships with them. I've seen them interact with our students in our high schools. Their response time when an elementary school principal having an issue with. Trying to get to children with. Um. And the fact that that principal could make one phone call and that SRO was in was. In front of the school in less than three minutes to help. I have. Effuses who are currently sitting. Parseric. And it started. Their trouble started in high school. So I do know that had they been able to. Had that additional guidance, things may have happened differently for them. But I also know that. Effects of policing in our schools and and I firsthand know. What that does to family. I. Absolutely admire and have so much respect for the SROs that we have have and have had in our schools. And I think that if I knew and I would have the full knowledge that those would be the same ones continued. After year. It would be a difference. But I think knowing that, just like Rachel said. We don't get to pick. We don't get, they're not ours. They are police officers. And there's, there is a lot. I mean, there there. But I've also seen them do it. Amount of situation. That one's. I'm. It it's a hard one because of. Last year, the knowledge that has come out for, you know, everybody in our community and in the stats that are being very widely shared now. Um, but it's not. Not even a large percentage. So I just, we've got to find a happy medium. Some. Our kids are feeling supported and getting.
I have another question. School zones. How much of an impact is having uh, SROs affect how much they patrol our school zones?
Oh, um, well, it's much easier to drive the work of our SROs because they have no other obligations in the day other than what we. Fire them to do because they're. So if we have um, complaints. Added crest line this week. I sent off to the traffic sergeant of VPD asking if they could patrol in front of crest line per Bobby Hyde's request. In fact, that's all I can do is ask the traffic sergeant, but if we had. SRO at Mountain View, I'd say, hey, tomorrow morning, can you be at crest line and? Out there, um, so it's. Work when we're partners with them that way.
That we do have partnerships in other ways in which like at York. There's a Clark County Sheriff. That who sits in. Across the street from the school and doesn't. Up and drop off times, just because he has to do it. So he sits in the school zone so that. Are aware of his presence. Our cool situation. Out on their own as well.
Does change behavior to see a car. I I uh, I kind of resonate with. I resonate with the optics things. My my. Oldest started high school a little over ten years ago, right? Fifteen, fourteen, something like that. Uh, and every time I come to the school, there would be. There there was a patrol car parked on the sidewalk. Um, or in the like right next to the door parking. And even though. I learned to know better, every time I see that, it's it's always a what's wrong kind of cognition. Rather than a what's right kind of cognition. It's like, oh, there's a police car there and that's in part because of the place I live, which is. Unpoliced, right? The way that Rachel puts this. Is that schools ought to be unpoliced in the sense that our neighborhoods are safe and unpoliced. And I know that means there's a lot we're not seeing because the patrols are moving around. Um, but. That that optics piece. This the side of the car gives you pause. Uh, the side of a fully armed person in the school. Uh, has given the pause. I wonder, could they go plainclothes? What would the difference be? That kind of thing. Uh, but that speaks to a difference in practice. And now you've got me wondering why. Uh, given that list of twelve trainings and and how effective we know that is with people. Uh, why the police haven't reformed to that point overall and what what could we be doing or saying? Uh. In our advocacy role to bring about that out. So. Those are, those are lingering. Constant questions on my mind when I think about this.
I was thinking the same thing. Like. The thing. Officers both through that training because they act with kids. Others. Out in the general community, not just at school. Good information to for them to know. I really. Liked when I heard from Rachel. And. Causing me to feel like a little, and I'm not trying to be wishy-washy, but. I really like the idea of mental health services. As. Find out when people, when school just. Stop having SROs, what did they do? At. For friends. Accomplish what we want to have accomplished. I, you know, I'm I'm with. Everybody on that we've had some great SROs in our district. That kids have really bonded with and and.
Graduations, they. Reporting events. I mean, we are. Very involved.
So I don't want to negate. But I'm wondering, is there a better way? That. Closer to what we want.
Well, in part, that's what makes me glad about the change in the law because when we began talking about this last year. Uh, we were at Wallace's Legislative Committee talking about this, which is the statewide thing and kind of shaking out a a. The beginnings of a consensus which ended up being the law and. Just like let's train everybody involved in security. Everybody involved in the school in these twelve things and. Perhaps we'll have fewer referrals and now you've presented us with some data that says, yes, we will. If we focus on restorative practices and things. Looks like it cuts the referrals in half in a first effort. Uh, at Heritage High School. We should develop that. And we should have those resources. More than four hundred, but. Yeah, it's it's an ambivalence for sure because there are some really good things that these offices are doing. But we don't control. Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's not something I would take, I take like, I know none of us do. One way or the other. Um.
I was gonna say like, uh, because when you said like, what did we do before, right? So that we have educators in this room that have. I'm sure that Brian probably was a principal. A teacher way before, right? And then after, so maybe, you know, some thoughts like what what did you do before? Versus what you did later.
I was at Evergreen before Union for nine years and then at Cascade for three. So there really wasn't. Uh, there wasn't a relationship with the police. You would call if you had a problem and then they would come. So then you it. It was a different era, so I'm not acting like it's apples to apples. At the same time. I really do believe what Rachel said about. There was always this feeling that if there was a school shooter, it would make you safer if there was a police officer there when we didn't have a police officer there. The statistics show that's not true, so that. It did. I mean, again, this is my looking back and we all have different perspectives. It was a case when it was you really working with your kids and your families, not that our folks aren't doing that now. But it wasn't like, oh, call the police. Because there was, like I said, I was at Evergreen High School. There were other schools that we heard from the police that they would never go and they called because they called all the time. So if there was an upset parent. Or an issue at school that had nothing to do with the police, the police would be called. It became about power. And so that wasn't how it was my experience at Evergreen, but I know there was other hearing from police officers. So. I don't think it fully answers the question, but it was really. Uh, just figuring out how to work with your kids and your families and then if you. It was, it was a situation you need the police, you call the police. I don't know if that makes sense.
Let's say, what about Julie?
Um, I was gonna echo the same thing because we didn't, at Henry and the Lax, we didn't have a school resource officer. So when situations arose, we looked to see what we could do in building first. And calling the SRO was our last resort, depending on what the um, situation was. Some of those interactions were positive and some weren't and kind of taught us um, some lessons as to when or how we would call. But going back to what Brian said, starting with the students and the relationship first. We could fix most things and start problem solving and building. And just having the family and the student know that we supported at the school level first. Was really helpful and until it elevated to a certain level, we just didn't even involve. The police, so just not having it on campus. I don't think um. Made anyone feel less safe or had a different perspective. When we brought the police in then, it it did feel different. So we had to make sure that that was um. Needed in the moment.
I, I, oh, uh huh.
And then we'll go back to Julie.
Yeah.
And then we're going back to Joe.
I think one of the things we've learned in the last five years, in the last year, but it's really two, we talk about safety, what does school safety mean? I think it's changed a lot. So when you guys were talking about mental health, again, I think that was a great question to ask where the affinity groups are students, does it make them feel safe? And I think the answer a lot of the time is no. Now, I don't know, but we should ask that. But does it make them feel safe? You know, what, what does it mean to have a safe school? We've had safe schools, summits, what does that mean? And I think this, this something, one of the reasons you guys are working through this because it's complicated. But we know if our students don't feel safe, it's not a safe school. If our parents feel like this is not safe because police are there or not there.
And so we read our safety policy with students' real experience. So that we can focus on their experience rather than a physical hazard or an external threat as a approach to things. And that, that guides thinking into the social emotional supports and the, and the mental health resources that we know they need.
So Jay, I'm curious your take on this from a special ed kind of lens.
So I have had the opportunity to work with some highly effective deputies and police officers in working with students with disabilities. And I've had the experience of working with some folks who were not as effective. I do acknowledge there are times where the safety needs of the building go beyond what school staff in security can respond to. And I can say that I have, we have worked with some officers that have done amazing work at supporting the mental health relationship and positive social interactions of some of our students at Hollingsworth, for example, and, and positive, positive relationships and are an added bonus to the program. And Shane's talked about two of them, who, who that primarily is focused on. I do agree with Brian that the perception of the community related to this would be mixed. And I think that's, that's a challenge to, to respond. So in, in summary, I mean, it, it comes down to the skill set of the officer and the training and support we give them in all, in all occasions related to students with disabilities and some do it highly effectively and some we ask to step aside as we, as we help work through the situations, but I think that that would be the case regardless.
What are thoughts?
Our, our, our contract requires us right now to do that training too. So we are doing that training with the police, but we have no authority over the policeman, regardless of whether we do the training or we don't. And it really is, I don't think there's anybody that would argue, you, you could get a good one and you can get a not good one. And we don't have any control over, over that.
On the interview panel.
But we don't get to decide.
Contracts right now aren't written. So, I mean, that could be an issue that's put into the contract.
Shane, why, what is the reason that this kind of training just isn't done as part of police professional development? Is it the cost of the training? Is it time? What is it that being that it's such a, you know, it looks like such good training? Yeah.
Why don't they do it?
Interesting. I think, like everything at the police academy teaches you how to police people, but they don't say that the training you're receiving is how to police adults, right? And they don't say that the training you're receiving is how to police adults that don't have disabilities. Or, I mean, so they train you on like how to recognize whether somebody's having a health-related episode or those things, but the experience with it. I think, I believe that it'll be more like CIT, as I mentioned, when CIT first became a thing. Cops that are training crisis intervention, right? We can't just have cops run in and pull out their nightsticks and do whatever. So that started with one person on the squad that got that training. And I think like this is similar, this first step of adolescent brain development's a real thing. Like the brain not fully being developed until somebody's 25, like all the science that supports that, it's a real thing. Yeah, they're 21 and allowed to drink and make decisions that a non-fully developed brain makes. But then when a police or anybody responds to them, they treat them as an adult instead of, I'm sorry, your brain is not fully developed yet. You're not 25. So I think that like this is the first step, the legislature recognizing that these 12 areas are, are important to understanding how to deal with kids. That for folks that have been in the education business for a long time or their whole lives, they understand kids are kids. For anybody that's been a parent, you understand that kids are kids to some extent, but still even thinking of your own kids going, wait, so he's not really an adult until 25? Like even though he's like 18, he's considered and then 21 is another milestone. And but the car rental companies have it down, like you can't rent a car until you're 25 because they understand that like their statistics show that you give somebody a car at 22, they're going to drive it like it was stolen, right? Like, because their brain's not fully developed yet. But I think eventually then it'll become like CIT, which is a full 40-hour training that all police officers now have to go through. 40-hour training. This is similar, like when we put this on this last year, we did, I think it was 15 hours or something that we did, but we could have talked a lot longer on all of these topics and subjects. We could have done 40 hours of, of training on these 12 topics. But I think eventually we'll get there because it does beg the question. So legislature is requiring cops that are SROs to go through these things, but all the cops that are dealing with kids in the summer or in the evenings or on the weekends aren't required to have any training? Like, is it important or isn't it?
So that kind of begs a question about, and it kind of goes back to what Rachel was talking about is where do you invest your money? Um. And I don't know what the cost of any of these things are. But it almost makes me wonder if we go into some kind of a partnership or something with the local jurisdictions supportive financially for some of this training so that we know if we have to make that call to the police that the likelihood that we have an officer that has had the training higher than it would be if we did nothing. We could also invest in mental health services for our kids and approach us in a different, I don't know if that's just but I feel like the partnership with our law enforcement. And we don't want our kids to think law enforcement is bad in spite of, you know, the stuff that we see on the news. Are too many cops that are awesome people that like there can be that one in the bunch. It's just like that mini occupation. I mean, but so, um. I think I'd like to see some more information or maybe another option that is not SR, SRO-driven, but it still maintains some kind of partnership that with the police and a way to get more training for them in these things. Oh, will be helpful to, for all of us, for all of our kids, no matter if I'm a day or night. I don't know how, what that looks like and how, you know, so. And then of course, where are we with? And what's that price tag look like? But what have other districts done? Decided to make that change, but went in its place because you can't just take them out and call it as done deal. Or did it school and when they have those blowouts, have a way to deal with it that's productive.
You said the Portland Public Schools had eliminated theirs. Or was it for next year or was it theoretically for this year, even though no one was in school this year? But it started last summer for this school year, so I'm curious if. And so the question is, what are, you know, there is one district that has, okay, what are we doing? What are we doing instead?
That's juicy.
I like Victoria's idea of training more because I kind of, like I said earlier, that if we do and when we have to call police, then they're not going to have a relationship with us. So then if we do, that we call people who have been trained because they've all been, I like that idea, but I don't know how we make that work or what it would look like. Or even that's our, yeah, so, but I also, like, if we're going to do these, if we were going to go with it, like, when do we have to have this replaced? Because this is like probably a now thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, he's been asking about the, the, which is why we're talking about it. I mean, he's been asking, when we didn't have kids in school, obviously he understood that they suspended it last year and then we got into this year, we didn't have kids in school and kids started coming back. But they have to have their own planning for what are they thinking about for this next year? The county kind of gave us, you know, we're just not, we're not doing it. Now they've kind of opened the door back up to a possibility for doing it. Correct. Correct.
Priority one call, yes?
I mean, I think realistically, if we weren't, if we didn't have, if we had a smaller presence, the money would go into other internal options because we can't mandate training for the police that would prepare them to come to us. And that'd be everybody. There's no way we could pay for that. They're not paying for it themselves. So it would be a presence, trying to maintain some presence. And then, and then us determining how do we spend the money within the district to meet needs, listening to student voice, listen to our administrators' voice too. My guess is our, you know, we don't have our four high school principals here speaking. They, they may speak passionately about having SROs, they, they might not. So but we, we would have a little time to think about how we wanted to work through that.
Well, the other thing too. But it would be an opportunity for this, for the school district to partner with the city council members and the county commissioners. Done that before on sentence. It's been a while, but so if we all have skin in that game, training for people.
Yeah, it's hard to ignore it at that level. I agree.
And other districts. Yeah, exactly. And it gives us, we all have skin in the game. We're all part of the solution. And it frees up police how you've got these, you know, the people that were our SROs now can be out there. And I don't, but when we need them, we need them. And when we don't, we don't.
I had had one conversation with Jeff about what they're thinking about in Vancouver. And he was indicating that he was going to have a, a conversation with the chief. I don't know that he's done it yet, but I do think the two districts together certainly speak with a lot stronger voice than Vancouver speaks. One voice, Evergreen speaks another voice. Not that we haven't been agreed, but it's always just, I mean, our contract's different than Vancouver's contract. They do. They, they have two, they actually have, I think they've had four SROs, but two have been county and two have been city. Well, and I think it's pretty much just Vancouver and us because we, we're in the same boat. I mean, this battleground may have the county and the city battleground. Yeah. And then you got Kamas has their own situation that with their own police and the county potentially. They all kind of overlap the county, but every city's likely different on how they handle it. So let's in Vancouver, you got 40,000 kids at least have the same same jurisdictions that you're working with.
Going to another public
for training. It's not going to any specific. They're not getting anything.
I don't think it'll be a gift to public funds. Question is whether they come.
I usually all do workshops in the big powwow circle, so no one's standing.
Oh, yeah.
While we're having this discussion.
Right.
Feel free to sit over here.
Well, you, I can see as his arm stops moving as much, you can tell he's getting tired standing up there. He hasn't hit that microphone in a little bit.
No, I, well, I haven't been speaking either. I haven't figured out how to do it with my mouth and not my hands. But one thing I, I will point out, because I, it's a great discussion you're having. It's a necessary discussion, a discussion we need to have. But I wouldn't, I would. Or as the third largest employer in Clark County, it deals with some very complex matters. Severing ties with both of the jurisdictions and having no SRO going to make things extremely difficult for me and for maintaining timely elegance and safety information. I mean, if we think about a school shooting threat that we might get overnight, the picture of a gun and a threat to a school, we've had SROs that have done all the legwork on that. And we've known those individuals and had relationships with our administrators and many of the families to, to do those investigations. Any of the, the family issues that we're dealing with, trespassing people off our properties, the just even like when a lockdown happens and I don't even know why the school's in lockdown. We had one happen at Sifton the other day that was a reverse 911 call. And staff were trying to leave the building and they got a reverse 911 call. And all those work, it takes an area and sends a reverse call to every, and the fact that police weren't on Sifton property told me that there wasn't a huge threat to Sifton. It was just in the area. But when I got through to 311 finally, they told me that the suspect was armed and dangerous, that that's the reason for the lockdown. You know, and, and the school's immediately calling me going, we got a reverse 311 call. Do you know what's going on? And I don't. So I have to call 311 because I don't have an SRO that I can call and say, what'd you just hear on the radio? And then by the time I get that information, like a lot of time, which is valuable in an emergency, has passed. So I, I mean, another So I, I mean, another option, if you wanted to lower the amount of police in our schools. Uh, because the county, uh, covers a hundred percent of our district. Over seventy-five percent plus all the hurdles of what would the police, the city police do in the county area? Even though it's a more, uh, costs us more for a county deputy than it would for a city officer. Maybe a consideration would be a single district first deputy. Have to, of course, work through. How do they feel about a county deputy patrolling Clark County Sheriff's Office? How would you feel about your deputy responding to schools in the city? But at least we would have a resource that. Trains and. Relationships and. Rest. Very. Breaks his heart every time he asks to arrest somebody, um, does everything he can not to arrest that kid. That might be an option, but to sever ties with all law enforcement. Point, we're in a different day and age with, see. Unviolence is all time high right now, uh. Hope people all the time, the things that we teach our kids. All our emergency drills isn't nothing teaching, it is. Like or tornado or. How to respond and think for themselves in an emergency.
And can the Clark County Sheriff's deputies hear radio talk on the VPD or in Vancouver?
Dispatch center that they use is the same, Clark County has its own channel. And own channel, but most of them scan. So if there's nothing happening on their channel and the other channel's talking, it goes to their channel, but then as soon as. Anytime tones come out for a major call, an alert or priority one call. Uh, it automatically, um, sounds out and then they know that it's an important call to listen to it, bank robberies or shooting.
Great. Yeah, we like those ones. But we don't like them, but we like when they're notified right away. Um, okay. I think there's a big difference between having somebody who is. Watching all the calls versus people that are policing our schools, uh, and so if we had some sort of. You know, happy medium where we have, you know, just that, the intel, I guess. Cause I don't, I, I, I get Shane's point. I don't want to lose that part of it. So.
And the three that we have now are.
Well, yeah, but if we went, if we had to go down to a single person, so we could just have that notification, because I also, Rachel said it great. And I get, I get every aspect of what she said earlier. But I do like the idea of having somebody that can warn us to a situation, an outside threat to our school. I like the idea of our, you know, extra patrols in our school zones and keeping parents not driving through there, like, you know, I know that I. Very mindful when I go to that school zone every morning, so.
Do you want, uh? You want us to try to find that sweet spot of what it sounds like, what you're saying, which would allow for some connection still? Social, the, the other mental health supports and. And, and actually reach out to Vancouver too and see if we can't, I mean, maybe there's a way to leverage in the contract, having more. Ability to determine our destiny.
And the, the training piece.
Yeah.
But if we're not going to have. A sorrow's. Up maybe with.
Yes, the city, the county.
Officers that I.
When is the next, is the next, the board meeting is the fourteenth or something like, uh, no, it's not, it's like fifteenth. So if we try to come up with getting a lot of this stuff worked out. And then. Get you information ASAP and if maybe we talk again the fifteenth, I know we'll see each other like about twenty-four hours straight for three days.
Yeah.
Uh, um, and have meetings and, and, uh, so. And maybe you and, and Brian, I can. Have a conversation, try to figure out, I mean, we've heard a lot, right? But we've certainly heard. A sense of direction. And punch the microphone before you step away.
Well, you'd rather punch the board.
Would you like to punch me? I'm, I'm. I'm here.
It's difficult. Conversation. One of those things that's just not a hundred percent.
Cut and dry.
Yeah, it is not.
Well, and when. As kind of a frame of reference when. Uh, the SROs were being pulled from Portland, because I don't actually think it was the dis. Base. Hold them. Intended it, okay, I thought it was the city person. Right, I just thought it was the city, the mayor had said that they were, and or somewhere did, but, um, when I first. When this first started to come up, my very first phone call was to Jenny. And to say that, you know, I'm. I want to kind of just get our, the supporters of the SROs kind of gathered together and. Al and my supportive pal and all of their work, you know, that's where my stance was, was. I'm going to fight because I know what those, what our SROs do in our schools, I'm going to fight for them and then. And I still want to fight for them and I still want to build. But that's. Also, you know, sometimes me and my. But I would love the world to look like, um, so. So I, I mean, it's, we're definitely not approaching this lightly. This is. Our decision was a lot. Done to put this together for us. Or and for standing up there all this time.
Thanks, Shane. We'll talk, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
I think the next couple are pretty twisted, honestly. I think they are. I know Julie in courses is very short.
I, I said.
It's your piece.
I said July.
Oh, you're on the agenda again now.
Did you want to do it again, Julie and Corissa?
I mean, if you don't have any more to add, it's. We don't want to, we don't want to vent something else to talk about.
And then I don't, I don't, I don't really have anything.
We want to spend another hour here, come on. You got something? No, okay.
I don't really have anything legislative, I don't know if Rob does. I do want to, I do want to raise the. Question of the guidance that came out today on the masks for.
Oh, yeah.
Meetings, um, I'm looking at. Uh, the Q and A that came out, Wassa had sent something out yesterday. And then they corrected it with links to two documents, the two documents that you have with you there. I look at the phase three, we're face three. Phase three counties have new options and considerations for phase three counties, public agencies such as school boards can add an in-person, we've already been doing that in-person component publicly, if they can meet the general requirements. Our issue has been the six feet of social distancing, which kind of limits the space that we have available. Uh, but they said if using vaccinated sections. Uh, you can have greater capacity. If all attendees are vaccinated, occupancy restrictions, physical distancing requirements are not required. Fully vaccinated attendees are not required to wear a face covering.
Okay, so the question I have on this. As we do have our in-person part and we also have our remote part. If you're here, you have to be vaccinated. Don't have to wear your mask.
You're asking the question.
And that because we have an opportunity for somebody who's not vaccinated. So participate. Cause they still have to sign up to do pub, you know. Public comment, they, but they could still raise their hand and be. Brought in during our, any testimony on anything that we're, you know, getting, you know, public comment on.
If you look at the, the board meetings on district property that it's not a school, in-person components of school board meetings remain optional. If your school district chooses to hold an in-person component to its school board meetings and the location of the in-person component is on district property that is not a school. Then fully vaccinated individuals are not required to wear masks. You, you, your school board does not need to take action to permit vaccinated individuals to be present without a mask. This is the general provision. A proclamation twenty twenty-five thirteen, your district may implement an honor system and assume that members of the public who are not wearing masks have been fully vaccinated. However, the school board has the authority to adopt stricter requirements. But I mean, basically what you're saying is, is if, if there was assumption anybody that comes to a board meeting is vaccinated, they don't have to wear masks. There could be people without masks that come in. They're likely, just like there would be a store or somewhere else that might happen, but it's on them in that situation, it's not on. Or you could put in requirements that you have to show proof that you were vaccinated. I mean, if, if we were to. We still would have a limit on capacity. So there are, there are various options, um.
We have a limited capacity and a limit of six foot distancing that remains.
I, I, I don't know.
Not required in a fully vaccinated only. Action area.
So it's complicated.
So Rachel, go ahead, say why we can't make the vaccinated people.
It, well, before this guidance, it also required face masks and the, and the physical distancing. Cause my sense of the emergency proclamation is that. The accommodation for those who don't want to comply with these orders, because there would not be. Access, which. I don't, that's a good question, because I don't think we can just designate the board room as a vaccinated zone and it's, that's what you mean. Right, I don't know that that would be terribly good decision.
But your district may implement an honor system and assume that members of the public who are not wearing masks have been fully vaccinated. I, I. I don't think you would if they chose to come, but if you said, we're just.
Is this guidance literally saying we could cut the room in half and say the front half is a vaccinated zone?
Could have the front couple rows, put a row in between and then have them spaced out in the last few rows if you wanted to do something like that. But then if you do that, I'd get to prove that you're vaccinated. I think that's.
I think if we do it, we do it just like anybody else is doing it right now and the, in the state of Washington. People are worried and asked, we're not asking for their vaccination number, we just.
Honor system.
As an honor system, and I think that's the way we have to treat it if we decide to.
It does say though, please note, Miss Ling has been, by and states that documentation of vaccination status. Must be available upon request at any time.
Yeah, that means it's not optional. It emerges that it's not optional to require the documentation, or at least the registration.
Have the. Have the ability to ask, it doesn't necessarily mean we would, but I think that's the.
At this time, what is the requirement on students? If they go to school.
And for rounds in school.
I, I could see, uh. Reception problem if we're not modeling behavior with respect to students.
The other side would be, maybe we need to model the.
The, the high school ages, secondary students can be vaccinated.
Or there's a part of me, and I don't know, maybe I'm just being.
This is also saying when it's not.
It, it choose not to be vaccinated, make. Uh, participate. Those of us that have gotten the vaccine. Are consequences to choices that people make.
And, and there is that aspect of modeling that we've been vaccinated in. Correct.
Oh, we're in a ministry stores, because I'm trusting.
It is. Especially for us that work at home all day long.
Sixteen hours.
Yeah.
My, my office at home doesn't. We're the same, we're the same too, however, at, at, at this point, if, you know, if your whole team is wearing it, you kind of just feel like you just join in, right? So, um, I, I don't know, I, I tell you after a year of mask policing. And.
Kind of terrible.
Yeah, it's kind of actually kind of refreshing not having to worry about. And being on the air system and just, you know, so.
When it clearly says if you're vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask in the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I, I. That's what that says, yeah.
If we're going to do it, we just follow what the state has out there for every other public space.
It's not a school.
It's not a school. If we're going to, if we're going to.
And we could put, we could put up some. Bindage. Encourage people to sit. I mean, but we can't. Uh, check them. Right, I mean, those of us that have had vaccine aren't really the ones. A lot of people that can't get the vaccine for. A lot of people that can't get the vaccine for.
Right.
I mean, it's not, because it's not so always. Cause they're being stubborn or something. It's just. Have the right to their opinion about it. Prices hurt themselves.
It's the, uh, it's the vaccination rate in the calendar at this point.
I think it's a little over fifty.
You got a full open businesses at seventy percent.
I think end of June is what he's. Yeah. So do you want, you want us to kind of look at this and write up, this is a recommendation based on what you've said and send it to you all, make sure that you're on board with it? Or are we good with what you said already?
We're gonna, well, what? We're just going to have a Thursday call. I know this is going to come up. And we're going to talk about it tomorrow too. So if we get a couple of days to listen to.
Yeah, we don't have another meeting until, I think June fifteenth is what I said.
Region six tomorrow.
Yeah, you guys will talk. Yeah, I mean, we're not going to have another one of these meetings where people will come to it for another three weeks.
I think we have some, we do have some consensus unless we hear.
That's good.
They hear something else dramatic that we should do differently, they'll let us know.
No, I, I've been writing up the notes from those meetings whenever it is appropriate and I can just listen, reflect that. Add it to the plan, but this time businesses are going to be open in, maybe the gym. We can follow the, we can generously follow the guidance.
Okay, that sounds good. Beyond Bailey.
Okay.
Oh, I, I don't know if Rob had anything he wanted to add about legislating stuff.
No, I want to have the positions that I think could be profitable for, we're going to, uh. Sign on to for the legislative assembly, but that's work that we can do in July.
Okay, um, we're going to go into recess and then we'll reconvene in a few minutes. Our executive session, which should last about forty-five minutes.